Falmouth Community Television. Presents. Town Meeting Live, Fall 1998. FCTV's coverage of Falmouth Town Meeting is made possible through the generous contributions of the following corporate underwriters. The Hearth and Kettle Restaurant, your neighborhood restaurant, and a proud supporter of Town Meeting Live. Capture the essence of Cape Cod culinary delights at the Hearth and Kettle Restaurant, open 7:00 AM daily, serving a mixture of original and traditional recipes for breakfast, lunch, and dinner. The Hearth and Kettle Restaurant urges everyone to support the restaurants that support the community. Cape Cod Printing, a Carlson Communications Company. Cape Cod Printing is a full-service printing and design company. Their state-of-the-art facility is located at 59 Technology Park Drive in Falmouth Technology Park in North Falmouth. They offer a wide range of high-tech solutions for all your printing needs. You can contact Cape Cod Printing, Carlson Communications, or Carlson Advertising at
FCTV's Internet services provided by Cape Internet Incorporated, Cape Cod's Internet Access Headquarters. With intro and advanced training, toll-free connections, email, worldwide web access, business and personal accounts. Dial (508) 420-4700, or visit their homepage at www.capecod.net, or email sales@capecod.net.
If you need quality workmanship and professional courteous service, then your only choice is the Abbey Glass Company. Abbey Glass, a family-owned and operated company serving your family's glass and home improvement needs for over 20 years. Offering services like pickup and drop-off, free insurance inspections, direct billing to your insurance company, screens, auto glass, and windshield replacement stickers, just to name a few. So if good service is what you want, then you want the Abbey Glass Company. Call (1-800) 696-5717.
Cape Cod Bank and Trust Company with four locations in Falmouth, at the corner of Palmer Avenue and Jones Road, at the corner of Scranton Avenue and Route 28, at Falmouth High School, and they're open seven days a week at Falmouth Super Stop &amp; Shop. Their motto is Cape Cod's most convenient bank, and their phone number is (1-800)
Falmouth Collision, centrally located at 318 Dillingham Avenue, is a proud sponsor of Town Meeting Live and Falmouth Community Television. Falmouth Collision covers all your auto body repair and automotive painting needs with very reasonable prices. Their phone number is (548) 0320.
The historic Nimrod Restaurant, featuring traditional and nouveau cuisine and live entertainment seven nights a week.
Thank you for coming. This time I'd like to bring to order the October 4th, 2011 Planning Board regular meeting. The first item on the agenda are minutes from previous meetings. Mr. Secretary.
Yes, there's a couple typos there, so I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from September 13th and September 27th.
Second?
The other two on the agenda are typos, should already be removed. And I didn't receive any corrections, so I believe as I corrected, we'll probably be fine, unless anybody else has corrections on those.
So your motion is to approve September 13th and September 20th?
Twenty-seven.
Oh, September 13th and 27th. Okay, is there a second?
Pass second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Minutes of August 22nd and September 20th are going to be tabled?
No, the 22nd was already approved, and we did not meet on the 20th.
Okay.
There's a typo.
We love our work process, sir. Sometimes it lets us down.
I know I missed one of those meetings. All right, thank you. The second item on the agenda is Approval Not Required. Applicant 43 Church Street Nominee Trust to subdivide one lot into three lots located at 43 Church Street Wood Hole.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the board to take no action on this plan tonight, and we will revisit it at your next meeting of October the 18th.
Okay. Then...
You need not take any action.
Okay, so I won't even entertain a motion for that?
Correct. There is, however, an approval-not-required plan that was received on Friday after the close of the agenda on Quinipox Street or Avenue, and I would ask the board to entertain that plan, please. It's on your table.
I'm sorry, would you say that again, Brian?
You'll notice on your agenda, Ralph, that it's plans received between the 28th of September and October 4th. And we received this plan on Friday, what the Friday was, after the close of the agenda. The agenda needs to be posted on Thursday for open meeting law purposes. And the reason we have that statement on this agenda for you, so you can look at these plans that come in after the posting of the agenda and after the close of the agenda. We've done this a couple times before.
So this is an approval-not-required?
It's an approval-not-required plan, and I believe there is a representative in the audience who would like to speak to it.
Okay, then be fine, please.
And Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name is Stephen McKenzie. I represent FW Nominee Trust. At this time, we have another plan that will be filed probably tomorrow or the following day with minor revisions to that, so we'd ask the board to not entertain that plan this evening, and hopefully we'll be able to entertain it for the next hearing. We have a couple of changes to the plan after it came in.
Okay, then. On the line? Okay. So...
This agenda is falling apart rapidly. And it always happens in front of fifty people. And then two other little parliamentary procedures before we start. Mr. Chairman, I'd ask the board to take Johnson Homes out of order, because they don't want to be heard tonight either.
All those who want to leave now?
And there's a letter from counsel for the applicant indicating that they are going to make some changes to the plans. They got me a letter. And they would like to see us again on the 18th of October. So if there's anyone in the audience with that site plan review on Lot 9 County Road to Johnson Homes, they have asked to be postponed to the 18th of October.
Okay, so if there are people here for that, then they should be allowed to leave. Sir, did you have a question?
Just a quick here, when does it being postponed to?
October 18th, Tuesday, 7:00 here in town hall.
October 18th.
That'll be after the other board meeting?
It'll be part of our agenda?
Not regularly.
Other board.
Oh, I don't know, like...
We'll have a room.
But we'll be meeting here.
Our meeting is in two weeks, and it will be a part of that meeting.
Is it part of the board's?
No.
Planning Board meeting on Tuesday night.
The planning board will meet separately from the board of the...
Are we separate?
Yes.
Again, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Okay, so if you are here for that, or for the previous item, and you choose to leave, now would be a convenient time probably for you and us. And then also...
I would ask the board's indulgence to take greener image landscaping out of order. It's a straightforward decision, that should take about five minutes. I'm watching over.
Okay, so if you have a copy of the agenda here, you'll see that the planning board has a decision tonight, and it's toward the end of the agenda, and it should be a rather straightforward decision, so I'm going to entertain a motion to take that out of order at this time. No moves. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Okay, so we go down to the decision. Applicant is Greener Image Landscaping Special Permit to Construct a Contractor's Yard on 10.65 acres located at 955 Sandwich Road, East Falmouth.
May I make a motion, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Latimer.
Motion that the planning board approve the application of Greener Image Landscaping Incorporated under Section 240-38M of the zoning bylaw for a contractor yard to include storage of equipment and supplies, the parking of wheeled equipment for landscaping and other non-agricultural uses located at 955 and 981 Sandwich Road, East Falmouth, also shown on assessor map 17, Section 1, Parcel 32B, Lot 2, and Parcel 32C, Lot 0, as depicted on a plan entitled "Plan of Proposed Contractor's Yard and Nursery Prepared for Greener Image Landscaping, Inc.," drawn by J.E. Landers-Carley, P.E., dated August 24, 2011, scale 1 inch equals 40 feet, pursuant to the following findings and conditions. Findings specific to Section 240-38M of the zoning bylaw. The planning board finds that the property located at 955 and 981 Sandwich Road is not located in a water resource protection district, that a portion of this property is currently in agricultural use for commercial nursery operations/uses. With these threshold questions answered, the planning board can go on to find that one, such other uses, non-agricultural, had previously been accessory to the commercial nursery operations based on information provided by the applicant in Paragraph 2 of its addendum to petition for special permit for contractor yard. Two, the existing structures, parking, and storage areas, and other physical characters of the lots are suitable for the proposed uses based on the site plan referenced above. Three, the lots contain a minimum of five acres based on assessor information. Four, the bylaw requires a front yard setback shall be a minimum of 75 feet, and a side yard and rear yard setbacks shall be a minimum of 50 feet. However, the planning board finds that the lesser existing setback, 50.3 feet, for the office located at 981 Sandwich Road, is adequate, providing sufficient screening and buffer from Sandwich Road. The planning board also finds that the side and rear yard setbacks depicted on the above referenced site plan for employee parking, five-foot truck and trailer spaces, nine feet, and the storage of bark mulch, 16.8 feet, are adequate, taking into account existing vacant land. The provision of retaining walls and the provision of native buffer plantings. Five, the planning board finds that the activities, including traffic between the subject premises and Sandwich Road, will not have an adverse impact on the neighborhood, and that the construction width and grades of Sandwich Road are sufficient for safe travel to the site by vehicles to be stored. Vehicles exiting the site will use curb cuts as depicted on detail plans, subject to condition number one below. Conditions: One, curb cut details, subject to approval by the Department of Public Works, shall be as per detail plans entitled "Details of North Entrance," and "Details of South Entrance," drawn by J.E. Landers-Carley, dated 8/24/11, attached hereto to this motion. Two, any extension, alteration, or change to the activities approved under this section shall only be allowed by the planning board applying the requirements and standards of Section 240-216 in Article 42, Special Permits. Any such change, alteration, or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing activities. Three, the planning board conditions the following operational limitations. A, regular non-emergency hours of operation will be 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday for contract yard activities. This decision does not restrict hours of operation for nursery activities. B, the type, number, and amount of vehicles and trailers and the equipment or supplies to be stored shall be limited to the schedule provided by the applicant and attached hereto. C, additional limitations shall be as set forth in the attached excerpts from the applicant's "Addendum to Petition for Special Permit for Contractor Yard." Special permit findings, therefore, based on the above, the planning board determines that the application to be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter, the board considers the site adequate and suitable in terms of size for the proposed use. Impact on traffic flow and safety and neighborhood visual character will be mitigated as per the findings and conditions above. Method of sewage disposal, source of water and drainage, utilities, and other public services are adequate as per the application and plans. The application will not have an effect on the adequacy of the supply of affordable housing in the town. The decision of the planning board under Article 39 is multiple review, is non-applicable.
Second.
A second. Mr. Curry, in the conversation I have with you this afternoon regarding the second line, which indicates the section under which this is being approved, would you comment on that, please?
I took a look at the bylaw today, Ralph, and I think a solution to the conversation that we had this afternoon would be to simply, this is on line two, board members, of the motion paragraph, the very first paragraph. You'll see it states Section 240-38M of the zoning bylaw for a contractor yard? To devote, I'm sorry. I think if you simply delete the words "for a contractor yard," then after the word "to" add the words "devote a portion of its lot for..." Hang on, we're there, one more step. In other words, I see your point, I'll get to that in a moment. To devote a portion of its lot for the, strike the word "include," so to agree, Section 240-38M of the zoning bylaw, to devote a portion of its lot for the storage of equipment and supplies, and continue on. You're correct, Ralph, but it does not specifically state the words "contractors yard." The words that appear afterwards, after the, are essentially how it's defined in the bylaw. So I think if you strike those words and add the devotion of a portion of the lot, which is straight out of the bylaw, then you will have cured the issue that you raised Because obviously what they're doing, and it's used, is as defined, contractors yard, but the specific section doesn't use those exact words. So it's fine to delete them, and just add the bylaw language.
Somebody would have to make an amendment. Right. I need a motion for the amendment.
I would make a motion as to change the verbiage in that line two, as remove "for contractor yard," but "devote a portion of the lot to storage of equipment."
Seconded. Does everybody understand that? Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? Wait a minute, you made the...
I made the motion.
Yes, you did, and he's...
I seconded the first motion.
I seconded the amendment, now we're voting on the amendment.
Who, you seconded the amendment?
I seconded.
Okay, any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
Aye. I have abstained because I wasn't present.
Right. Okay, now back to the original motion as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
Aye.
The motion carries. Okay, back to the, now I need a motion to come back to the original agenda?
Seconded.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, the petitioners zoning articles for the annual November 7th, 211 Town Meeting. Petitioners articles, are they in the...
Here, in your pocket.
Okay. Okay, do I have the right article? The first article is the residential homes for recovering alcoholics and drug addicts, is that the first one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is, this is actually a hearing?
Yes, can they want to assist the procedure, read the public?
Fine, Ken, would you be kind enough to do that?
Is this on all of them here? Because I thought...
On the back of the agenda, we do have the hearing proceedings.
Is this the one on homes?
It's the first, it's the first paragraph here, and it was published in the Enterprise on those dates. You should have that in your pocket. If not, then...
I actually don't see that one, my thought is...
Well, just for the record, Mr. Chairman, this is a public hearing to amend the zoning bylaw, and the legal ad was published in the Falmouth Enterprise on the 13th of September, the 20th of September, and 27th of September. And I'll ask you to put that into the record, so we can send it to the Attorney General's office with these...
Okay. All right, so in a public hearing, the planning board listens to the public, and we do not discuss the recommendation for these petition articles at this time. So I will read the first article. Residential homes for recovering alcoholics and drug addicts, parentheses, sober houses. Structures used to provide housing exclusively for individuals actively enrolled and successfully participating in recovery programs that, at a minimum, are professionally operated or managed by people with documented history of being abstinent for at least one year. Provide residents access to staff 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Prohibit anyone with an outstanding criminal warrant to participate. The owner of the residential home for recovering alcoholics or drug addicts shall provide furnished living space for all residents. Not permit smoking anywhere in the house. Allow no more than two people to share a bedroom. Provide one full working bathroom for every six people, including residents and staff, and have a working kitchen with a sink, refrigerator, oven, and range. Additionally, each facility owner shall establish and prominently post rules that are at a minimum requirement: one, absolutely no alcohol or drug use on or off the premises; two, immediate eviction for drug or alcohol use; three, immediate eviction for failing to submit a urine sample when asked by house staff or a representative overseeing treatment program; four, immediate eviction for committing or threatening violence; five, immediate eviction for conviction of a crime with a resident; six, mandatory participation in a treatment program; and seven, a house curfew. Add the following section to the zoning bylaw, codification and recommendation only. No, that's the next one. So that article is to amend Section 24113 by adding the following definition. So at this time, I will entertain, is there anyone here representing the article? Yes, would you like to speak?
Yes. Good evening, my name is Ed DeWitt. I'm an attorney, and I represent a number of residents in the Locust Street Sitters Pond Pin Oak neighborhood. They approached me last February because of some instances of criminal activity associated with a sober house on Locust Street. At that time, we asked the building commissioner, Commissioner Gore, to take enforcement action, and one of the responses that he provided us was that there really weren't standards for sober houses, that essentially anyone can hang up a shingle in Falmouth and say, "I'm a sober house," and that is all that was necessary in terms of operating a sober house. Now, how did we originally come to even have mention of sober houses in the zoning bylaw? Well, back several years ago, there was an incident with a sober house in Pinecrest Beach where Commissioner Gore found that sober house in violation of the zoning bylaw, and federal housing officials came to town, and as a result of consultations between the town and the federal housing officials, there was a consent agreement that said that the town would allow sober houses by right within, anywhere in the town. So without having any standards, and are we considering this as the whole petition article, or just the definition section as a point of order?
No, it's actually, point of order, Mr. Chairman, it's actually one article. We read the first definitional section, but it's actually one article with the standards that Attorney DeWitt would like to address the board. You didn't have to read the entire article.
Okay, so without any standards, there is a history of problems. And the problems at the Locust Street sober house were that within a very short period of time, five of the residents were involved in serious criminal activity. And there was a lot of publicity in the newspapers about that. And one of the, one of the things which is first and foremost from the people who I represent is that they are not opposed to sober houses. They think that facilities for people in recovery are important part of our community, and providing those services are very important. And one of the things that they want to do is to have a system that guarantees success for recovery, that maximizes the opportunities for recovery. So first and foremost, there is no definition of a sober house or a residential home for recovering alcoholic and drug addicts. So the first section of the article that we're proposing is a definition. This definition is taken from another state's definition that they use to certify sober houses. Some states certify sober houses. Massachusetts does not. We're one of the states that doesn't. So this definition was borrowed from a state regulation in another state that certifies sober houses. So it basically is saying that these are cooperative living places where there's going to be a structured program for recovery. Now, the next section, which gets into the heart of the regulation, recognizes the agreement that the town made with the federal housing officials, that this is a by-right use within the town of Falmouth. And it says that it is a by-right to establish a sober house. Now, we are legally obliged, under our consent agreement, to recognize that, and we would have to challenge the federal government to change that. So we're maintaining that. We're not saying that you have to jump through hoops or anything beyond meeting the definition of a sober house and carrying out a responsible recovery program. These are businesses. The Locust Street sober house, just to give you a sense, from the reports in the newspaper, was making about $8,000 a month in fees from the residents for living there. So these are businesses, and we're just asking that they act in a responsible way. The number of residents is based, again, largely on the consent agreement, which the town had entered into, which says two persons per bedroom. There are some differences here, because we've kind of made sure that what are we saying is a bedroom, and we've gotten into further defining bedrooms as, whichever number is less, the state building code, or the state sanitary code, if it's a Title V system. If you've got a four-bedroom septic system, you know, you shouldn't be able to have eight bedrooms or counting because of the load. It also gets into some of the language in the state building code in terms of defining minimum sizes of bedrooms. If you have a room that's smaller than... If you have a room that's smaller than 70 square feet or less than eight feet in any dimension, you can't count that as a debt, as a, as a bedroom. There is a case in Chelsea that was decided by the appeals court that says that public safety is paramount in, in, in these buildings, and we've added some public safety requirements. In that particular case, Chelsea required a sprinkler system installed in a sober house. They found that, that it was, there was a genuine threat because of the density of the building, the air of the building, and the construction, that there was a, there was a hazard for fire. And we think that those public safety decisions are best left to experts like the fire chief or the fire inspection service in, in the town. So we are requiring, you know, basic safety equipment, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, and sprinklers if that, in that particular instance, is, is, is in the interest of public safety, of protecting primarily the residents, and that's who we're, we're interested in there. Because there's, there's three entities in a successful sober house, if you think about it. There's the operator of the sober house, whoever owns, owns the building. There are the residents, and there are the neighbors. And they all have a stake in this being a successful operation, and, and we think that that's, that's, that's paramount. One of the big problems with complaints within the town of Falmouth is related to parking. But they also, these are people with, with handicaps and disabilities, and we think we need to spell out that if people need a handicap parking, that, that be made available. It seems only, only fair. One of the problems is that sober houses in Falmouth have become de facto boarding houses and are not, in fact, sober houses. They're merely guises for, for boarding houses. So we're saying that if you, if you have people who are not in a recovery program, that makes it a mixed use under our zoning. It, it turns it into a, a boarding house, and those are not allowed in, in any residential district as we can. If I can just back up to the by right use, you have one district where single fam-- or I think there's two zoning districts where two, where single-family residences are not allowed by right. Those are industrial districts, and in those districts, you can have multifamily housing, but you have to have a special permit. And we're saying, treat sober houses the same as you do in that, in that case. So they're, they're treated exactly the way other residential structures are, are treated. And lastly, there's the ability to get a written opinion from the building commissioner to move forward. This is, this is not necessarily a panacea to make all the problems with sober houses go away. What it is, is it's a system where I think that the three parties that I talked to can work cooperatively and effectively to maximize the likelihood of successful recovery and recognizing that there is a place in our society for, for sober houses. But it does require that the people who live in these sober houses be in a professionally managed active treatment program that are subject to rules and regulations that are going to help them really make the best effort towards, towards recovery. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. I understand you don't want to get into discussion of it, but in, in terms of clarification or how we got to what we did or what we discussed, I'd be happy to--
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Dewitt? All right, then, thank you, Mr. Dewitt. At this time, then, I will entertain comments from the public. Please take the podium and identify yourself.
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth, Precinct 5, Town Meeting Member. I have a question to ask as a parent. Does anybody know whether one bathroom for six adults is adequate? When I read that, I wondered that. I thought about having six people in my home using one bathroom. I have mixed feelings about asking this question, but I did wonder that when I read this. Can someone give me what the standard--
Maybe Mr. Dewitt can tell us how he came up with that in his, in this proposal to change the bylaw. I mean, to add this to the bylaw. Excuse me.
As, as any good lawyer, I plagiarize a lot in terms of what's going on. This is actually taken from a state, state law which they felt was reasonable, and that's where it was borrowed from. I don't have any specific sort of insight into whether it is or it isn't and, or, you know, what, you know, what, how many adults can use bathrooms, but that's, that's where it was taken from.
State of Massachusetts?
No. As I, as I mentioned, Massachusetts does not certify. This is from a state certification of sober houses, and I--
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else have any insight into that particular question? I hope that helps you, Nancy Hayward. Are there any other folks in the audience that would like to comment on this, this bylaw change? Yes, sir.
Meeting, I'm Bill Ferney. I'm a member of the Substance Abuse Commission. Kind of have a, a unique perspective personally. I'm a counselor for over 30 years and a person in recovery for over 33, and I've benefited from this service. But I'd like to read a statement that the Substance Abuse Commission came up with. It's, it's our position that sober housing is an essential component of the continuum of wellness for individuals who are trying to recover from substance abuse disorders. As with any community resource for individuals with disabilities, sober houses have to respond to an array of constituencies. In our view, they are the residents who are trying to recover from substance use disorders, those who reside in proximity to the residences, the recovery community. A comment on that, I think the recovery community, when, when public, when there were public comments about the behavior of individuals in these places in recovery, it sort of reflects on the recovery community. And I think it, it, it caused, I can say in myself, it, it causes a bit of a flinch. The community at large, but including public safety, social service, and healthcare agencies, and the recovery home owners and investors. We contend that the primary responsibility for sober homes is to provide an environment for individuals who are recovering from substance abuse that is sober, alcohol and drug-free, safe, stable, and secure. And we believe that these benchmarks can best be achieved through the practice of six simple guidelines. Comprehensive onsite management, regular random drug screenings, access to case management and counseling services, regular house meetings, resident accountability for financial obligation to the house, and following house rules and regulations, and ensuring that all state municipal regulations and ordinances and bylaws for such dwellings are adhered to. While we're supportive of a strategy, excuse me, for sober houses in Falmouth to develop standardized guidelines similar to those above, we feel that draconian regulations may be unenforceable under the Americans with Disabilities Act, and frankly, if there was a legal challenge, and the cost of that might be almost prohibitive. And also placing owners in a financially untenable position, which would reduce access to this already inadequate resource. We encourage the proprietors and management of sober houses to work together with the community in an effort to develop standardized guidelines aimed at meeting the needs of the broad constituencies and solidifying this important community resource. I can't think of, of a more important resource. For people who are in that early stage of recovery to be in an environment where they can safely remain alcohol and drug-free, where they can embark on, on employment opportunities, educational opportunities, where they can engage in recovery-centered activity, I think it's, it's absolutely critical. And I think that, that I'd have to say, in my own personal experience, many of, many recovery homes in Falmouth, and I'm not going to get into naming them, but are run extremely well and run, run very close to the guidelines that I outline. So I, I just, I want to see us do whatever we need to do, but I want to see us preserve, and I think the commission wants to see us, preserve this valuable resource. I mean, it's so important, and without it, and I bet in communities that lack this resource. And it's, it's, it's a difficult thing. So in many ways, Falmouth should be proud that we're home to so many places where people with this disability are welcome to get well. Thank you. I'd entertain any questions.
Any questions from the board? I, I have one. I, so you're saying that you would prefer that there not be a bylaw like this in this town, but that, that these places manage themselves? Although it sounded to me like the criteria that you read in your, your letter from your organization pretty much mirrors what's in this regulation.
I think there's a lot of similarities because I think there's, there's a place for, for competent standardization. I think part of what happens, and, and part of what I heard and just my experience in the, in the business of treating chemical dependency is the bylaw sounds a lot like a recovery home, where there are onsite staff who provide counseling services, who provide other services. And sober houses are a different level of care. They're, they're not a, they're not a treatment center. They're, they're frankly, they're, they're places where people who've been to treatment are now embarking on, on, you know, it's organized, it's structured, but not, not as though they were in treatment. So it's, it's a little different. I think, I'm not surprised there are similarities.
It sounds very different to me if this, if one has treatment and the other doesn't.
Oh, no, absolutely.
It sounds like a major difference to me.
I mean, I, I spent much of my career in recovery homes, and they're very different with, that are staffed by licensed counselors that are, have 24-hour-a-week people, but they're intended for people who are in a different stage in their recovery.
Does Falmouth have any of those?
We have one, yeah.
Is it Gosnell?
Yeah, the Miller House. I suppose in, in, in the interest of self-disclosure, I--
Okay.
I am the director of the Miller House.
Can I ask you this? Do sober houses, as they are now known and operated, that don't have treatment as part of their program, is there a, some kind of an umbrella organization in Massachusetts that, that, that helps them operate and advises them and maybe-- Bob, help me, when schools get, they don't get certified, they get what?
Accredited.
Accredited. Thank you. Is there something like that in, in, in the state of Massachusetts where a sober house can receive accreditation, which is outside of the, sort of, the law, so to speak, but lends credibility to it?
Right now, there is a, one organization that I'm aware of called MASH, and it's Mass Association of Sober Housing. And it's a small group of sober houses and primarily in the Boston area, although there are some new Bedford houses involved. And they've, they have a template, but they, it's not an accrediting body, it's just a loose organization of sober houses in, in an effort to, to maybe get to that place where there is a, a good housekeeping seal of approval, if you will, for, for sober houses. And I think, you know, the challenge is, is, flat out, I think the challenge is the cost of, of meeting some of those standards. Yes, sir?
Your concern about this being, sober house being different from a treatment program, a house that, that has a treatment program, I think if we looked at this six, number six, mandatory participation in a treatment program, it doesn't say in the house, but I think if, that will loosen up just a little bit to say mandatory participation in a treatment program. Or having recently, within a period of months, completed such a treatment program, I think that might make it a little bit clearer that it isn't, per se, a place for treatment, that it is a place where recovered and recovering addicts and alcoholics can go without necessarily being a, a treatment center. I think that little change would alleviate that concern. The other question I had for you was that this is apparently taken out of a state statute from some other state. And before we talk about whether there's any kind of federal preemption here, I think we want to know what the status is of that state, of those other state laws vis-à-vis the federal government. I think that's a question, maybe that's a question for Mr. Dewitt, actually.
I'd be happy to answer that.
Please.
The, the federal issue here is whether you're discriminating against people with disabilities. And as I, as I said, we have a consent agreement with the federal government on what we have consented to, and that is that we would allow sober houses by right where other residential uses are allowed by right. So there, there's not a federal preemption issue here. Also, there is a difference between residential treatment, which I, I believe the gentleman was alluding to, and outpatient treatment. People in sober houses should be involved in an outpatient treatment program, and that's why the definition includes that they be participating in an outpatient treatment program. They may only be, you know, visiting someone on a, you know, weekly, bi-weekly basis, but, but someone needs to be monitoring their recovery. It's not that, otherwise, it's sink or swim. And I think what we're, what we're really trying to do here, and I, I have to say that I think that some of our standards are less draconian than the speaker laid out in, in, in terms of that, because we're not requiring, although we, we think it's a good thing, onsite management. There might be such a small-scale sober house where having a full-time onsite manager would make it uneconomical for that particular operator. So we didn't get into any of those kinds of things. What, what we're really trying to do here is not through draconian methods, but we're trying to make sure that those people who are living in sober houses have the greatest opportunity not to relapse into a substance abuse, that, that there's someone there who has a financial stake in making sure that they're, they're holding the course and, and staying on. And that we don't get into sober houses being called un-sober houses, where if you look at the trash going out to the, to the, to the sidewalk, it's, it's full of fifths and quarts and, you know, empty six-packs. And that's literally what was happening at this one facility, because there are no standards right now. And I think that that's, that's the biggest problem that you have.
But before you sit down, Mr. Dewitt, I may have another question for you, but I defer to my other planning board members. defer to my other planning board members. It appears here that in number three, immediate eviction for failing to submit a urine sample when asked by house staff or a representative overseeing the treatment program. So, that appears to be an enforcement paragraph, sentence, an enforcement sentence that tends to me to sound as though it's a, an example of examining the person's treatment. And so, I come from the airline industry, and I was asked to make urine samples. And the company was qualified to do that through the FAA. And you are from the aviation industry also. And so, do you find any, when I bring this up, did you find that that would be in any way a problem with your, in your definition here?
I don't, and again, this was borrowed from the Connecticut regulation. It's not a statute. It's a regulation overseeing sober houses. One of the only ways, particularly with some substance abuse, to determine whether someone has slipped is through, during, is by doing a urine sample. And this is the only way to monitor that someone is recovering, and that's what these houses are for. Now, it doesn't mean that because they've had a slip that they get evicted. It means if they refuse to participate in the screening activity, they're subject to eviction. I mean, people slip in recovery, and I think that this recognizes, this only gets people evicted if they start engaging criminal activity, they refuse to cooperate with a recovery program that is overseeing their recovery, or they do something bad.
Now, wait a minute.
Well, my point was only, I have no problem with the test. I just said by house staff is my only question. That was my only question.
Now, how are you going to recognize, excuse me, reconcile that you don't get evicted if you slip up and your urine sample comes back bad, but you cannot, you are immediately evicted for using a substance off premises? I mean, I can understand, yeah, you're a victim for using on premises, that's against the house rules. But now, how do you get a bad urine sample if you haven't been using the substance someplace? I think that's just a logical anomaly there unless you want to say, unless you want to say, oh, take off premises out of there, and then we can say, well, yes, failing the urine sample doesn't get you out. But failing the urine sample means you've been using, and if you're going to be evicted for using, well, then you're being evicted for failing the urine sample.
Okay, but the rule is, look at how the clause is written. The first one says there's a rule against alcohol use, okay? The second rule says eviction if you violate the rule. There's a parallel construction here. So, there is a rule against drinking, but it doesn't mean that you automatically get evicted.
Absolutely no alcohol or drug use on or off the premises.
That's the rule of the house, but it doesn't, the other rules actually include eviction in them.
Immediate eviction for drug or alcohol use.
Okay. I missed, right.
Okay. Then immediate eviction for failing to submit a urine sample. Well, if you failed your urine sample, then you have been using drug or alcohol, going back to two, and you're immediately, that needs to be straightened up.
Well, granted, and it's stronger than I represented that it was.
Clean it up.
But it is, but it is, you know, it is a problem in terms of people not cooperating with their recovery program.
I want to get something that can work here, so.
I think this will work. I actually do think it'll work.
I could just.
Straighten that out, because right now, unless you want to say immediate eviction for failing a sample, well, then that's what it means.
Yes, sir, please.
Just to one perspective, one of the things that's often said about chemical dependency and something I've known throughout my career is it's an illness that relapse is unfortunately a frequent occurrence. So, when we say, and this is what we're saying, when you've had a resumption of symptoms, we're throwing you out. Now, I know this is a tough analogy, and it's hard for some people, but if someone has, say, a cardiovascular concern, and they don't do what their doctor tells them, they're eating all the cheese, they're eating all the candy, they're doing whatever, and they don't exercise, and they have a heart attack, nobody says, well, we're not treating you because you did it wrong. People say, let's get them in the hospital, let's get them stable, let's see if we can get them to do the right thing. And that's basically my experience with sober houses in Falmouth, is their approach. It isn't, and it isn't perfect, and it isn't exact, and this is a really tough illness to treat, and it's a blight on our society. And these are resources that currently, and I agree, we need to have some standardization. But I think just that one about you got to go if you relapse, my goodness.
I don't want to be getting into this. I don't, I'm not concerned here about the substantive rule, whichever way it goes. I just want to be sure that we, it's a clear rule, what it means, and it's consistent. That's all I'm talking about here. If you want to say slip up on anything and you're out, that's substantive, I don't have a problem with that, but I want to know that it's clear one way or another so that people who are subject to this can't say they were denied due process. That's all.
Well, that's certainly an issue.
Is there anyone else?
If this went into effect, this standard, do you know of any number of houses in the town that would actually issue impact and they would not be able to operate? Would this affect anybody as they're written now?
Oh, sure, I think it would, yeah. I mean.
I'm not looking for names.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, absolutely. It would have an impact. And I think, again, my view is I would love for the houses in town to have an opportunity to standardize, because they know the people, they know what they're doing. I'm not entirely sure that a Connecticut recovery home statute is exactly appropriate for a Massachusetts sober house, which is a different entity. And that's, that would be my view.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other comments from the public? Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Good evening. My name's Karen Caderah. I'm the director at Falmouth Human Services. I'm also an ex-officio member of the Falmouth Substance Abuse Commission, and I've also been serving on a community group of organizations and providers in the community who have been working and researching this problem for three years. I can give you some member organizations who've been on that team working. Gosnold Treatment Center, Falmouth Human Services, the Bountiful County Sheriff's Department, Recovery Without Walls, which is an outpatient treatment program for women, the Falmouth Service Center, the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce, the Cape Cod Community Foundation, the Community Health Center of Cape Cod, Duffy Health Center, and David Viera, the state I want to give you a few research items that we have gathered, one being from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Human Services, Department of Public Health, Bureau of Substance Abuse Services. An alert that they wrote to the community in May of 2007 regarding alcohol and drug-free housing, AKA sober houses. And I'd be happy to submit this to you, which you can have.
Can you summarize it briefly for us?
I can, I'd like to read a couple of sentences from it.
Please.
While there is a great variation in alcohol and drug-free housing, such housing is distinct from residential rehabilitation treatment programs, AKA halfway houses. I think Mr. DeWitt was referring to them as recovery houses. Those are the rehabilitation treatment houses. Residential rehabilitation treatment programs are professionally operated substance abuse facilities licensed and funded by the Department of Public Health and are required by regulation to provide a rich variety of substance abuse treatment services to residents with addictive disorders, while alcohol and drug-free homes are not licensed and are not funded by the Department of Public Health and therefore are prohibited by regulation to provide substance abuse treatment services to residents. Well-operated, further down, well-operated alcohol-drug-free houses provided needed support, provide needed support to persons in recovery through the provision of sober living environment, often as a follow-up to treatment. The Department of Public Health recommends that individuals requiring residential substance abuse treatment be referred to licensed residential rehabilitation treatment programs, not alcohol and drug-free housing. So, they're very clearly making a distinction between rehabilitation residential treatment programs and sober housing. So, that's one thing I'd like to offer to you. The Massachusetts Association of Sober Housing that Bill mentioned, I did have their code of ethics here, which is all the guidelines that they have for sober housing, and I'm happy to submit that to you as well.
What was the name of that organization?
Massachusetts Association of Sober Houses. It's a very, 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 MASH. Very, very small group. I don't think there are more than 10 or so.
Right. And none of which are in Falmouth?
Yes. The group that I mentioned, that has been working on this for several years, has not had an opportunity to get together and write a position on this town meeting article, but I expect that they will do that before town meeting. But I can tell you from the discussions that we have that it's my impression that this article is in fact extremely restrictive. I can't imagine that there is a single sober house that would qualify according to this definition. And I think some of the things that would eliminate them from qualification immediately is that residents must be abstinent for one year. I can tell you that treatment programs are in the neighborhood of you go through detox, which is weeks, at the most, then you may go into a short-term rehab program, which might be a couple of months, if you have really, really, a couple of weeks, excuse me. If you have really, really good insurance, you might get 30 days. Then you could go into a residential treatment program, which may be three months, six months most maybe, but usually three months is much more normal. So, a one-year sobriety prior to entering a sober house is just not realistic.
May I interrupt you there?
Yes.
I believe that what that sentence says is that they're referring to the people who are operating the, and managing the facility, not the residents.
Oh, you're right. You're right. Thank you. Thank you. I misread that. Thank you.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Okay.
I'm not right very often, let me tell you. But in this case, I think I got you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Then there may be one house that I'm aware of in Falmouth that operates that might qualify for this definition, and that would be the Flynn House, which is operated in collaboration with Gosnold and the Falmouth Housing Trust. And the reason that they would qualify is that they do have 24-hour staff onsite, and that house is funded by Section 8 housing through the Falmouth Housing Authority, and so that's why they are able to fund that. Although I have to take that back because the outstanding criminal warrant, many of the people, even at the Flynn House, do have histories and on occasion may have an outstanding warrant that has not yet been processed. So, I do think that this is too restriction, restrictive, and we would have a position paper on this by the town meeting warrant date. There's one other piece that was mentioned about immediate eviction for drug or alcohol use. What the position of this group was is that rather than immediate eviction, our wording would be immediate transition back to treatment, which is a, really about the goal of helping the person achieve recovery, as opposed to punishing the person for a relapse, which in essence is part of the disease of addiction, is relapses. And I think we have to be aware that the expectation that a sober house can keep someone sober, or that a particular treatment program can guarantee success, is not indicative of understanding the disease of addiction. So, thank you.
Thank you. I will say that I'm a town meeting member, and I will look forward to hearing the position that your organization takes at town meeting floor. Other comments from the public? Yes, sir?
My name is Jim Fitzgerald. I live in Oak Ridge Road. We do have a sober house there. It just came out of the blue. This woman rents the house, and she set up the sober house. There's supposed to be eight women, maximum eight women, in the house. She is never there. I don't see her there. I hear all the rules and regulations that these people are supposed to abide by, but who's enforcing them? There's nobody in the house, to my knowledge, that enforces any of the rules. We haven't had any, we've had minor problems, but nothing that serious. But is there somebody that is supposed to be stationed in these houses to watch what's going on, to enforce these rules? I mean, you can have all the rules in the world, but if nobody's enforcing them, they're not any good, so. But thank you.
That's true. Sir, would you like to comment on that? I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name. Bill, yes. Would you like to comment on who enforces the rules in these houses?
Typically, in the houses that I'm familiar with, there is, sometimes it's staff or representative of the owner or management, sometimes in off-hours, it might be a senior resident with a number of months clean and sober that has indicated they have some leadership ability and some organizational skills. But typically, they're just, houses don't leave people to, I mean, if you think about it, if I own a property, I think I'll turn it over to a house full of addicts and drug alcoholics, and drug addicts and alcoholics, and move off isn't very wise.
That's what happens.
So, if, I would suspect someone is there. I couldn't tell you, I don't even know the property, but.
No, I'm asking generally.
Generally, yeah. It's my experience. I mean, I'm referring to most of the sober houses in town, and I talked with managers and owners with some regularity, or my staff does. There are people there in charge, I know that.
All right, thank you. Other comments from the public? Yes, sir? No, please, please take the podium, because the audience needs to hear you.
I feel that this particular woman in my neighborhood is running this as a business in that it's, because like I said, she's never there. She opened up this house, and she's gone. And she's not doing it out of the goodness of her heart, so.
Okay. Other comments from the public? Any further comments from the board?
Just one. I will want to hear what the experience has been in states where they have similar regulations, what the actual experience has been in terms of the operation of sober houses. We don't have to have that now, I'm just saying that, that's something that.
You asked it, so.
Okay. Because we heard that these rules wouldn't allow them to operate, so I want to know what the story is where these rules have been in effect.
Well, I talked to someone in Connecticut who was operating under this, and I told him the example of five criminal. him the example of five criminal, major crimes from a sober house. I said, "Have you ever had anything like that?" And they said, "Absolutely not." So without having some standards, and I think everybody's in agreement that you have to have standards, you know, what, what we have right now, the only rules that we have in Falmouth now is that all you have to do is call yourself a sober house, and you're in business, no matter who, no matter who moves in. And it's, I think one of the things that seems to be getting sort of clouded tonight is that if you're in a sober house, you have to be participating on an outpatient basis in some treatment program someplace. And the twenty-four-hour access is to that treatment program, it's not necessarily someone in the house. We're not requiring the house to have someone on staff twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We're saying that if that person has a problem in recovery, there's someone they can call twenty-four-seven to get the help that they need, so that they don't slip back in. And I think that that's, that's, that's one of the, the real sorts of problems, that if, if there is no place for an individual who's in recovery to turn when they're in crisis, then the likelihood of their succeeding in recovery is really diminished.
Would you also agree with the suggestion that instead of immediate eviction for relapses, re-transfer back to treatment?
I, I, I think that we would be very amenable to that, because that's really what we're, our goal is to maximize the likelihood of success in recovery and still maintain the semblance of a neighborhood. If, you know, if your neighborhood is packed with people who are substance abusing, your neighborhood's not a great place to live, and I think that's really something that we're really trying to, to do here. We're trying to do both. It's, it's not either-or, it's both have successful recovery programs and have quality life of our neighbor, in our neighborhoods.
Please, I still have, I still have a question, but I still defer Mr. Fox.
Well, in listening to both sides here, it sounded to me that they said many of the same things, and maybe they haven't even read or understand each position, and I would encourage both sides to get together and see if there's a way we can craft something that fits, because it certainly sounded to me they were very similar, and the positions, and I, it should be able to be resolved, and we don't have to have a big fight on town meeting floor, just work, get the groups together and make it happen.
We're happy to do that, Mr. Fox, and, and that's exactly the thought that I was, that I had as they were making the comments. They actually came up with more, there was a couple of mentions of stricter rules than what, that we have here, so I'm, I'm happy to do that.
I, Mr. Dewitt, you say that, that these, these houses need to be professionally operated...
Though the treatment program, that the, the recovering alcoholic is, he's under an umbrella of some treatment recovery program, he's an outpatient, he's, he's been in, he, that, or she has been in, in for treatment, and now the next step is a kind of independent living, but supportive independent living, where they're still on an outpatient basis in some treatment mode. And that need, they need to continue to do that, and that program's got to be available to them twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, so that if they're saying, "God, I'm really having an urge here," there's somebody who they can reach out to at any time. Otherwise, if they're sitting in this, this house on whatever street in Falmouth, the likelihood that they're going to have a relapse is, is increased. So that's what we're saying here. We're saying they have to be enrolled in a program, not at the house. The house is not a treatment center. And I think that there is some confusion, because I think some of the people who are having problems with us are saying the houses are treatment centers. They're not. But the residents of the house need to be enrolled in a outpatient treatment program that, that meets these very, very minimum standards.
I understand that. I guess my point is that there's several, several points here where you're talking about immediate eviction. Who would you envision would go up to that person and say, "I am evicting you because of this"? Who would that person be?
That has to be the owner of the facility.
So, and you, so you're saying that the owner of the facility has to be there enough to know whether or not violations are occurring, in other words, could not be an absentee landlord?
Well, the other, the other issue here is that if a neighbor goes to the building commissioner with these criteria, the building commissioner can now say, "Yes, there is, there is a violation of the bylaw, and I can take enforcement action," which includes closing the facility down. Right now, if you go to the building commissioner, he says, "Well, you know, we don't have any standards for what a sober house is, so you want to open your house up tomorrow, you, you can do it, and if there are problems," and, and one of the problems is the lack of sobriety, the building commissioner says, "You know, I'm really sorry, but, you know, having an unsober, sober house is, is allowed, the way we have our zoning bylaw written right now." And that's, that's the serious problem. That's, that's the real problem for the neighborhoods right now, is when you have this sort of breakdown where anything goes, and that's, that's what was happening, and it's, it's well documented, I think you all saw the newspaper of, you know, every, every, every edition had a new arrest. It was...
I understand. It seems to me, though, that, and as an attorney, you'll understand that evidence is, is a, is a part of the criteria of taking action in, in some way, shape or form. It, it seems to me as though, you know, the evidence would, would have to be presented to the, to the, to the building commissioner, and in this particular case, in one, in some of these particular cases, you know, who, who is going to provide the evidence that this occurred to him, and, and, and then how, how will, how will that, how, what will be the mechanism for this, for this to evolve and this eviction to take place?
Well, well, let, let me give you an example of evidence. Okay, the building commissioner visited the, the sober house in the, in the neighborhood that I represent. Okay? The garbage can has twelve bottles of empty liquor, okay, in there. That's evidence that there's drinking going on in the, in the facility, and a lot of drinking in, in terms of that. You know, we, we're, it's not, as I said, this is not a perfect, you know, solution. It's going to take all three entities to cooperate to have successful sober houses. We have to have neighborhoods that are welcoming to the individuals who are in recovery, we have to have owners who are responsible owners, and we have to have people who are committed to recovery for this, for this to work. And if those three pieces come together, I think none of, this becomes only an issue if we have failures, and we've had a lot of failures in this town.
Thank you. Further comments from the public? Yes?
Just a, just a comment. I, I just need to get something straight. So currently, we're putting groups of people with the same disease in the same house and putting them on the honor system. Is that correct? Essentially, that's what we're doing. And then we're making the landlord responsible for determining whether their recovery is successful or failing. Is that true? So it's the landlord that's making that determination?
There's no landlord on the dish.
Yeah, well, no, currently, I'm asking currently.
There is no one. There's no one.
And, and then it's also up to the building commissioner to make that type of determination.
No, he has no determination available to him. That's why they're trying to create a standard.
Okay, so I just want to get that straight.
So the question, answer to your second, second and third questions is no?
Right.
Right. Well, it appears to me...
Can you hear more?
Yes, please. Please take the microphone.
Sure.
It's important for everyone to hear you, even the TV audience.
Karen Cudera again. One more concern that, that I have about mandatory participation in a treatment program is that there's no indication of who would fund treatment. Mental health treatment is fairly expensive, and there's no indication of how long this would be in effect. So if someone chooses to live in a sober house for two years while they find a job and save some money to find some housing, would they need to be in treatment for that length of time, which is not going to be fundable by any insurance that I know of? So I, again, I think that this really hasn't been thought through. Yes?
That's why I raised the question before, whether it wouldn't be reasonable to modify that to say, "Or recent completion of a program within a period of months, one or two months before entering the, the sober house." So that you've done that, and now it's up to you to sustain that in the sober house, but you have completed it, so that you, you know, and if you can be, if you, if you screw up, well, then you're right back to treatment, like you said. Or you're out. But that, that's some, that's another modification that, that might make this a little more palatable to everyone, is to say, you're either in a, a treatment with twenty-four-hour access or you've recently completed a, a program and you're transitioning away, you know, you're transitioning back to society, so as a sober person.
Certainly would be an improvement to, to what's written here.
Yeah, just add that, that language. I think it makes it a lot less draconian and gets around the concern you have for some people who just can't afford it.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Dewitt's proposed bylaw revision talks about mixed use, and it specifically says that you are actively enrolled or successfully participating in a recovery program. It does not allow for a person who has completed a program to remain in the house. Did I have that right, Mr. Dewitt?
Yes. I think one of the problems that was happening, that we're, we're aware of, is that sober houses morph into boarding houses. As people leave the treatment programs and, and whatever, they just stay, and, and they become boarding houses. Well, boarding houses are a different zoning beast, and, and I think that that's, that's why we left the treatment in there, in, in terms of what's going on. And by having the mixed-use language contained in the bylaw, you, you prevent that sort of morphing without any zoning review taking place. And it's, it's, it's a basic sort of use change without other things happening.
To put a maximum term on how long you can be there, having completed a program. So that you say you have to go in within a certain period after having completed, when you can't stay there more than six months, and that's...
I, you know, I, I, you know, but there is someone who may be in an active treatment program for a longer period of time, and I, and I think that having that umbrella of treatment is the, is the real key here in terms of making them genuine sober houses. And I, and that's the, that's the real, the, the real difference. They may only be seeing someone on a, on an infrequent basis, but they're still enrolled in that, in that treatment program.
There are addicts, alcoholics, former addicts, who do recover, who do not need ongoing treatment, but who would benefit from transitional, a transitional situation. There are people who...
I, I, I think you're really getting into big exceptions to the rule in terms of what I understand is traditional and customary treatment of, you know, recovering substance abusers, in, in, in terms of that. If, if they're that recovered, then they don't need the, you know, that, that kind of support, it may be some other kinds of support mechanisms that they need. I, I think what you're doing is if you start getting into those kinds of things, you're, you're, you're keeping people out who you want to include, and you're allowing this transformation under zoning.
You've got to work this out before town meeting. You've got to work these issues out, that's all I'm saying.
I just wanted to ask, what, what is our point of this? Are we, are we going to take a hearing? Because I think, my opinion is, there is definite need for standards, but I believe that this has its written here. I could not support, because it's actually going to do harm.
So... We are going to talk about whether we support it or not after tonight.
We've spent an awful lot of time...
I know, but I think this is an extremely important issue, and I'm willing to spend the time of the planning board to discuss this, and the public obviously is, is participating. So I, I have no qualms about spending time on this. It's important. And so I will ask one last time if there's any further comment from the public. Any further comments, questions from the board? If not, then I will entertain a motion that we take this under advisement.
I move that we close the hearing and take it under advisement.
I would second that.
Further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. I would like to thank the people who've come here tonight to talk about this issue, because it affects all of us. If those of you, I'll give a, I'll take a thirty-second recess. For those of you who choose to leave, please, if you're going to discuss our comment, go farther enough down the, the corridor so that we don't hear your conversations here in this room. Thank you.
No.
It's exactly the same thing at the time, it's always driving me crazy.
Does that have an access to staff?
Because we've just held.
We have one meeting before the war, or maybe two, before town meeting.
Call the meeting back to order, and we will resume public hearing on the petition articles.
articles. When we started this meeting, we thought it was going to be very short, didn't we? We've been around long enough to know that these things can go on for a while. But when they're important, they deserve everybody's input and everybody's consideration. And I know some of you are here for some of the issues that we're going to be entertaining now, and I appreciate your patience. The next, let me see if I can get myself organized here. The next article, find that piece of paper. I see it. What did I do with mine? Here it is. No. Here. No. I don't know if I have it.
Grab another one, it's right up in the table.
Here? I didn't have this in my packet. My apologies, I'm trying to get myself organized. Oh, so this is the seven hour over here, right?
Yeah, here, you grab that.
Okay. Okay, the next article to this hearing, I opened the hearing for the next article. "To amend the official zoning map so as to change from agricultural double A to light industrial C land at 740 Thomas B. Landers Road, shown on Assessors Map 15, Section 4, Parcel 14, Lot 0, also shown on a plan of rezoning prepared for the Tradesman Realty Trust dated August 30, 2011 on petition of John Hadad at L." And we have someone here representing the article.
Mr. Chairman, may I read something that I've neglected to read before? All these articles were published on 9/13, 9/20, and 9/27. There were a total of 38 abutters notices were sent by certified mail on 9/16. 35 signed receipts were returned on the articles. This is for public record.
On all of the articles.
For the articles, correct.
The abutters for all of the articles, not just this, that ticket article.
These were the ones that were sent, correct?
Okay.
For all three of the articles.
I believe Mr. Currie covered 90% of that.
And I just wanted to put it in for public record.
He did not talk about the number of abutters that were notified. So, thank you for that. Ms. Moynihan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. For the record, I'm Laura Moynihan, and I'm an attorney from Falmouth, and I represent the petitioner for this rezoning article. The property is located at 740 Thomas B. Landers Road. I've given each of you a packet of GIS maps, and the first page shows the location of the property in a dark ink. It's at the intersection of Thomas Landers and Route 28. This plan here on the wall shows the lot in question, and here's Route 28 here, and Thomas B. Landers Road identified on the plan. This property is currently zone agricultural double A. It's in close proximity to existing light industrial A property, as well as properties adjacent to it and across the street, which have various uses going on at those properties at the present time. You'll see, to the west of the subject site, you have a large piece of land that I've marked as Steamship. That's the lot that was currently acquired by the Steamship Authority. And then further to the west, you have a lot that I've marked Ice Arena, which is the current site of the Falmouth Ice Arena that's now under construction. And that's on the front page of this packet. To the southwest, you have the Falmouth Industrial Park. And then to the northwest, you have the existing LIA district with various industrial uses going on there. I have some photographs of properties that are abutting this particular site, which are also zone agricultural double A. I'd like to just file those for the record, and these properties have the addresses written on the back. They're located across Thomas Landers Road. So just file one set, if you don't mind passing those around. And you'll see from those photos that the properties that are located in this area and further to the west, directly across Thomas Landers Road, have...
Could you check those directions? I'm really getting lost here on east and west.
You are. Excuse me. To the east.
Thank you. I thought I was really confused for a minute.
I'm sorry. I apologize. To the east. Okay?
Right.
To the east downtown Thomas Landers. Thank you.
All the things you said, west or east.
Okay.
That's why I was having a trouble.
All right. I'll go through it again. So to the east of the subject site, we have the Steamship lot, which is marked Steamship on the plan, which I've shown you.
We've got it, we're all set now.
Okay? Ice Arena, and then we have the properties to the northeast and southeast, the existing light industrial A properties. In this particular area, we have cell towers, we have dump, we have stump dumps, we have various business uses as well. Also, in this package of GIS maps that I've given you, each page highlights the existing light industrial A property in the community right now. And on the zoning map here that I put on the wall, these areas are in gray. LIA, there is some LIB in the industrial park, but we have areas that are now zoned LIA. And those are outlined on the GIS sheets that I've given you. The point of that being to show you how limited the light industrial zone property is in the community right now. And at the hearing on the light industrial C district, I talked about the local comprehensive plan, how it outlined that only 1.4% of all the land area in the community was zoned light industrial at the present time, about 410 acres. And since that time, the Spring Bar's Road parcel has been acquired by the town, which is 11-plus acres. And the Augusta property off of T. Ticket Highway, 20 acres or so, was also acquired. So those are two existing light industrial zone properties that are now owned by the town, and we expect would not be used for small contractors. What's also interesting, I think, from these GIS maps, is that with the exception of the Thomas Landers Road light industrial area, the other districts shown on the maps are abutted by residential districts, whether it's general residence or single residence. But you'll see from these GIS maps, these parcels, either across the street or directly abutting them, are residential or general residence districts. Here, for this particular property, we do not have abutting general residence or single residence districts. We do have the agricultural A district, which is distinct from residential districts. And the reason I think that's important is because some might say, "Is this the appropriate spot for an LIC-zoned small contractor's yard?", which is what this particular property owner would like to utilize the site for. If you look at the list that I gave you of the uses that are allowed in an agricultural district, I would suggest to you that the light industrial C zoning for this parcel is actually more restrictive than the agricultural A, in terms of what can be done on this particular piece of property. And I know you have the list, but I think it's important for the public to go through this very quickly. Uses that are allowed by right, without any special permit, site plan review by the planning board would be required, churches, schools, libraries, museums, parish houses, agricultural research institutions, cemeteries, group daycare homes, child daycare centers, parks, playgrounds, fire stations, municipal recreation buildings, agriculture, horticulture, and floriculture establishments, farms, dairies, truck gardens, greenhouses, natural ice harvesting activities, nurseries. A nursery could be allowed on this property by right. Home occupations, portable woodworking mills, and roadside stands for the sale of agricultural products, which in itself, under the state legislation, I believe, could include a building. Permitted uses by special permit from the zoning board on this particular piece of property, commercial accommodations, private clubs, not-for-profit, research institutions, philanthropic institutions, boat storage, accessory apartment, golf courses, and if the parcel was through five acres in an AGAA, would be a contractor's yard, would be allowed three acres in an AGA. So the point of all that is to show you that this parcel is not a single residence district-type parcel. It has a variety of uses that I would suggest would be, would have the same or similar impacts to those allowed in a light industrial C district, that this particular neighborhood, with what I would suggest are home occupation uses going on across the street, and to the properties to the east, which are zoned light industrial, is the appropriate location for light industrial C zoning. It has good access to the highway, it has a wide road layout, which you don't usually see to accommodate traffic, and it's not intercepting the downtown area. It can be used in conjunction with the existing contractors that are out in this particular area. And I think most importantly, the town's five-year strategic plan, which I'll just give you an excerpt from, essentially states that it is the goal of the town for the five-year plan between 2008 and 2012 to develop small contractor's yards. And that's been assigned to the EDIC, the town manager, departments, and the planning board. This is an appropriate location for the zoning, we know that. The last page identifies the small contractor's yards. As I said, this was adopted in 2008. It is now 2011. We don't have any small contractor's yards. This would be the first property that would be eligible for one if the LIC district is adopted. This is a goal of the town, it's a municipal goal. It's something that we'd ask the planning board to seriously consider when looking at this particular zoning article. Obviously, we would like your support for it. Some, someone, or some might claim the phrase "spot zoning," and that was talked about, I think, in the spring when we were here. And I think because this has been mandated as a municipal goal, that's one argument against spot zoning. It's a goal of the municipality to develop small contractor yards. It's not a goal that's specific to one individual. Also, in this particular case, you do have neighboring properties that have comparable uses, and you have existing light industrial zoning nearby. It's not a case where you have a piece of business property and you're plopping it down in the middle of a residential neighborhood, which I would suggest might be considered spot zoning. So this is a very different situation. We would ask for your support for this article. I think it is a very appropriate location for a small contractor's yard and for rezoning to the LIC district. I have some letters to file for the record in support. One from Gary Hamilton, saying that he's supporting the creation of the light industrial C district, as well as the rezoning of this property to light industrial C. Harry Turner, saying that he supports the creation of the light industrial C district, and supports the rezoning at 740 Thomas B. Landers Road. Gary Sylvester, he currently runs Gary Sylvester's Building Movers at 571 Thomas B. Landers, and he supports this rezoning, as well as the light industrial C district. And 494 Thomas B. Landers Road, Thomas Adams, a longtime business owner in the town, doing business as Katamet Sawmill, fully supports the town creating the light industrial C district, and the rezoning of this property at 740 Thomas B. Landers Road.
Thank you.
So with that, Mr. Hadad would like to say a few words. I know that you have a busy schedule tonight, but I think it's important that you hear from him. He is a small contractor in the community. He's been here a long time and grew up here, and I think his comments are important to this rezoning.
How are you doing? I'm John Hadad. I just want to say a couple of quick things. First of all, I grew up in the town of Falmouth. I'm a product of the community here. I went to Falmouth High School. I raised my family here. I run my business here. My business right now is on Thomas Landers Road. I'm right down the street. I developed Tradesman Circle, and it was a very successful project. The town of Falmouth is losing great contractors to other towns. I mean, everybody knows somebody that's moved. We've lost people like Maderis, Rabisa, Inman, McDonald. I can go, the list goes on and on and on, to Bourne, to Mashpee. Every other town has a place for the small contractors. It's in my opinion that Thomas Landers Road is where all the contractors are kind of moving over to. I mean, even originally, when Acme Precast got moved out there. I mean, if you look around on Thomas Landers Road, you have the Precast companies, you have the stump dump, you have the town, they have the town dump, you have a place where you can get gravel. All the other contractors are out there right now. So if we want to improve our neighborhoods, then why don't we have a place for the contractors to go? I mean, we know that we have contractors that are operating in a residential area, and we have an area where all the contractors are operating now. And it would be nice to expand, not just my property, but eventually even more land. We have lost a significant amount of light industrial space in the town of Falmouth. We all know that. The list goes on and on and on. We've probably lost 80 to 100 acres of land. So I'm thinking we should, you know, look at this project and hopefully get some support, and maybe this could be the starting point, say, from the highway, maybe to where the light industrial district starts, just a small portion to get it moving. But we would need even more than that. There's a need for it. After I started this process, I was approached by at least a dozen people to say, "Hey, John, what are you going to do with your old shop? Hey, is there any room for me?" People want to own their contractor yards in Falmouth. They don't want to rent. They start out in their backyard, they move over to Fuchillo's Contractor Yard, or maybe Gary Sylvester, and then eventually the company gets a little bit bigger and they want to own their own space. Are we going to lose these people? Are we going to continue? We have to plan. I know planning's hard. It's always, "Oh, not in my backyard." You always have all those problems. That's going to come up on every single scenario. But if it looks like a duck, and it's quacking like a duck, let's just, let's be bold, and let's say, "Hey, this is the right spot for it," and make it happen. Contractors don't really care about windmills, they don't care about sewage treatment plants, they don't care about any of that stuff. They want a place to tell their guys what to do, throw some stuff on the ground, get everybody out to work, and go out and do their business. And it's a shame that we've lost good people, but not necessarily even for this generation, but generations to come. I mean, we need to map out a nice, big area and say, "This is what we want. This is the heart of our community. These people are our friends, our neighbors, they're the people you call when you lean on them. Do you want people to come out of Mashpee when you've got a real emergency? Or do you want people to come out of Bourne when you have an emergency? Or would you want them to come out of the center of the town?" Even for plowing, if you have a plowing contract and you have a couple of roots in West Falmouth, Thomas Landers Road, or East Falmouth, Thomas Landers Road, you have main arteries on both sides with the highway, you have Sandwich Road, it's high and dry in case there's ever some type of natural disaster, none of the equipment's going to get trapped in low-lying areas. There's multiple reasons to support this, and I hope you guys can support this. And I hope people get on Town Meeting floor and support this, because this is the right place. Let's put one in for the contractors in the town. And we shouldn't continue to push, kick the can down the road. This is a... This is a shovel-ready project. This is, this is a concrete guy pouring concrete, and electrician helping build the shop, a place for people to go to right now. It's good for our economy, it's good for our, it's good for our community, and I hope you guys can support this.
Thank you. I'd just like to make a couple of quick comments that I didn't point out. This property across the way, I believe it's buffered vegetation. This property here, there is a residence here, but again, we do know that in the past, there's been some contractor yard activity on that parcel. It didn't seem to interrupt the neighborhood, and I guess what I'm suggesting is that, given the location of this particular property, where it is on the highway, we think it can fit within the uses that are there, and certainly the industrial uses that are further to the east that are within the existing LIA districts. So I guess really, the question for you, and I think from these GIS maps, you can see that even residential uses can exist in harmony with Light Industrial. And you can see from these other zone parcels, that there is residentially zoned land around them, across the street from them, and those are LIA districts, which are far more involved and allow far more or higher impact uses than what the LIC district would allow. So I'd ask you to just keep that in mind when you're thinking about the location of this parcel. It does fit, it is appropriate, and quite frankly, really not sure, you know, in terms of the LIC and the Thomas Landers Road, it seems to be the most appropriate location for the LIC zoning. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board for the people that, for Ms. Moynihan or Mr. Hadad? Clarification. Then I will ask for a public comment.
I'd like to find a minute. Good evening. My name is Matthew Hanley. I reside at 710 Thomas B. Landers Road, the parcel directly behind 740 Thomas Landers Road. I've also prepared a packet for the board's review. And I'd like to note that this drawing here is not appropriate. The lot size is not correct, and the deer corridor has been removed. I have included in my packet, that was done by ESS Design, the appropriate lot size in the deer corridor. I will put it up here for display, so the people in the room can see this. On this drawing, I know it's a little small, I apologize to the audience, there's a, this yellow line indicates the wildlife corridor set by the state when they built 28. There's two notations here, there's two arrows. This is picture A, point of view, and picture B, point of view. And these are the two pictures, the board has them in front of them. And this, the direction of these arrows indicates from the film that I was taking the pictures. This picture here was taken, you can clearly see that the land has been clear cut, no topsoil or vegetation left. There's a pile of stumps.
Excuse me, I let you talk, you can, you can reference it.
Just a moment, I need to know what are the point of orders?
The point of order is that you do not have a development proposal in front of you. This is strictly a rezoning application to look at a change of district. So any issues with wildlife corridors or development on the property now, I think, are out of order.
Mr. Chair, that's not a point of order, that's an argument. He can talk about what he wants to talk about, you can talk about what you want to talk about. That's not a point of order. He can, he should be able to proceed, Mr. Chair.
It's not a development proposal.
Well, fine, bring that up and rebuttal, that's not a point of order. But let him talk, and then you talk. It's not a point of order. You know that, you're a lawyer.
Just a minute, Richard. I'm going to allow Mr. Hanley to continue.
Thank you. The second photo, photo A, this is, is it here, is what is left from the wildlife corridor. There's nothing left. These trees that you see here are state property. This is the highway property. And I'd like to discuss, it's, in the zoning book, it is 240-91, which, which applies to wildlife corridors, and on this use, in this, it says, "All uses of land within the wildlife district shown shall be subject to requirement of these sections." And then it, on, in amendment D, it says, "As a reconstruction involves in the area, any disturbance of greater than one-fourth of acre of the movement of material or equal to 2,000 cubic feet has to be approved by, I believe, this board." Also, in the next section, it has to be reviewed by Natural Resources. And this, this corridor plan was to allow wildlife, whether it's the whitetail deer, foxes, grouse, or other small mammals, to be able to navigate their way along the highway so they're not forced to cross the highway, becoming a public nuisance, and that's why this green belt was, was actually designed. If you look in other agricultural zoning areas, as of like Ballenee or the Waste Treatment Facility that also bought 28, you'll see that there's also been a wildlife corridor that has been maintained, and in section, in the final section, let's see, I'll give you the, it also, it actually, I don't, I can't find the section at this point, but it says that this, this corridor, the width and proportion of the corridor needs to be a constant, and needs to be maintained in a continuous fashion along, from parcel to Another thing that I'd like to bring up is, in the initial meeting for this Light Industry zoning, I know yourself, Mr. Madeiras, and Mr. Curry had, had promised the residents of Thomas Landers Road that there would not be any spot zoning, and that if there was something to be done, that it would have to be a comprehensive plan. I have asked this board, and I've asked Tradesmen's Realty Trust to, to make sure their plans are appropriate, and that there's been an official survey done on this property, and there still has not been an official survey done on this property. I've also asked this, this board for some mapping exercise, so this town, not just the residents of Thomas Landers Road know what they're buying into. This zoning needs to be better defined, because whether the town of Falmouth likes it or not, Thomas Landers Road is going to be the new face of Falmouth. With the town's commitment to the ice skating rink, its location being on Thomas Landers Road, the traffic from this town will be traveling down this section of Thomas Landers Road. And if we just give the contractor the ability to do what they wish with this area, we're gonna have ugly metal buildings every hundred feet. And when people come to visit Falmouth, tourists, they park their car at this new steamship at 30 lot. I believe the capacity, if I'm, if, I might be corrected, is 5,000 cars. Most families are four people in a family, so take 5,000 times four. There's 20,000 people that are gonna be traveling up and down this section of Thomas Landers Road. This, this Light Industry C zoning needs to be more well-defined. How are these buildings gonna be looked? What is, what is this, you know, the vegetation? Is there gonna be any consideration for the wildlife corridor? Because this whole area, this whole area, the sewage treatment plant, all the way across Thomas Landers into Ballenee, is actually a wildlife corridor, as recognized by the state of Massachusetts. Not just this small little strip, this small strip, just, it's just set aside by the state when they built the highway, but this entire area has now been destined a wildlife corridor for preservation. Myself, my mother, and I know other residents of Thomas Landers Road have met with the 300 Committee, and they were, and that's what they said. This area is a wildlife corridor, it's a migrational route, and it's also a priority habitat. It's been identified as such. Originally, this, this section of Research Road, this is our parcel here, our parcel abuts Route 28 and Research Road. The reason why Research Road and of the Technical Park was previously undeveloped is because during its initial planning, it was discovered by James Mavor and Chase White that there was great natural resources in this area. This land that's being questioned in this area, besides the residences, has been unchanged in, in landscape for over 300 years. There's native grouse, whitetail deer, foxes, pheasant, and we need to consider this. Instead of making more, less restrictive zoning, the town of Falmouth should take in consideration that this area is gonna be the face of Falmouth. We should have more restrictive zoning, this zoning has to be done responsibly and managed in a way that it's not just a mishmash of metal buildings, and with, because in this zoning here, the, the parking lots can be closer to the lot lines, and, you know, there's, there's no, you know, previously in Light Industry A, they, they made provisions for this. This, Light Industry A, there was a, there was a special commission, and I have an article here from 1980, and it said, it reads, "The Industrial Development Board Wants to Map West Falmouth Track." In this article, I will not read it, because it's, I don't want to take up any more time of this board than I need to, but I will give you some excerpts. The board decided, went to two engineers and said, "We need to map this area and find out what's most suitable." Taking, and, and these two engineers advised the committee, the maps should take in consideration town property, archaeological sites in their nature, conservation sites in their nature, and also they addressed some potential historical concerns that were brought to the Planning Board's attention. But also, the board, and this is a quote, says, "No parcel shall be used or occupied in such, in such a way to create unsanitary or objective condition to the affected properties." One of the things that attorney for the Trade Men's Trust failure, failed to explain is that this property, this one here, there is within close proximity to six houses, and that there is no industrial building within a mile of this property. This is, this is a residential area, and because the residents of this area have not choose to develop their property for the quick buck, we are now being faced with this development and a spot zoning on top of our house. These block, this box right here, these boxes, that's, that's our residence. This is my shed, and this is very close to our property, and this is, this is Claudia Bourne's house, and there's no woodland buffer between Claudia Bourne's house. She needs to look at this every day. And I say, this Light Industry C needs better regulation, so the town of Falmouth doesn't need to see this for the next 10 years. Thank you very much.
Just a moment, I haven't called on you yet. Are there other comments from the public?
Good evening. My name is Eileen Ryan O'Doherty. I reside at 715 Thomas B. Landers Road, and I appreciate this third opportunity to address my concerns to the Planning Board this evening. As you know from other times that we have spoken, I am opposed in the strongest way possible for Light Industrial C being zoned at 740 Thomas B. Landers Road. This is an area that is wooded. The change to especially a spot zoning area, which we were assured when we met with the Planning Board is not how the Planning Board operates when we met with Mr. Curry, my husband and I back in May, and I trust that that is true. It would negatively impact the character of the neighborhood. It is a wooded area. The things that were mentioned previously by Ms. Moynihan are not located right on top of us. They are a distance down the road, quite a distance down the road. I'm unclear on a few things about what Mr. Hadad said tonight, and I recognize that that's not things that you can answer, but I do want to at least raise my concerns of what he mentioned, is that, while I acknowledge he may truly believe there is a need for contractor's yard, I'm not debating that, what I do not understand is the implication that with 740 Thomas B. Landers Road is listed and becomes Light Industrial C, that the rest of the neighborhood would go that way. I am here to tell you, and my neighbors are here to tell you, that you would have pre-existing non-conforming properties. It would not serve the business folk of Falmouth who are looking for contractor's yard, because we are not selling our properties, we are not providing an area that will become similar to what Tradesmen Realty Trust has done to their area in an appropriate area, further down the road. It's not going to help Falmouth to have the west end of Thomas Landers Road become Light Industrial C. And by implication, if you support this 740 Thomas Landers Road to Light Industrial C at Town Meeting, I know the board is most likely supporting the idea of Light Industrial C for the town for other reasons, which I understand, but that would roll right into a spot zoning kind of situation. Unless someone can explain to me, and perhaps you can, how does that, how does that not happen? How does it not become spot zoning? If Light Industrial C is approved at Town Meeting, and this warrant also, you know, follows on the heels of that, how does that not happen as spot zoning? I actually am asking that question, I'm not just trying to. No, I thought Mr. Curry could explain it to me, because we, we've had this, or perhaps Mr. Herbst.
I'll defer to Mr. Curry.
Okay. Because I know, and I trust what you said to us before when we met in May, that that's not how it operates, and for good reason, and I support that.
There are several hallmarks to spots, size is not a dominant. Size is not a dominant. We had a conversation with regards to how the planning board typically discharges districts in its little totalities. But at this hearing, I think it's proper for you to raise that question in front of the board. And they can answer that question when they get to their discussion of this article on the 18th. I'll take all the evidence that you have at this hearing and reach a conclusion. We typically don't reach conclusions or make statements of fact until the public hearing is called.
Sure. No, I appreciate that. But I just thought perhaps if there was one explanation that you could give me that would clarify it, I would have appreciated that.
There are many ingredients that go into it. I can give you some reference to read, and I don't want to get into a treatise today or tonight for the board on spot zoning. It's a rather complex question typically. Professor Verbauski in his book at New York Law School has several pages devoted to it. I'd like to share it.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. I'm sure I would be able to digest it over time, and I understand it. So in summary, I would just say, please do not support 740 becoming light industrial C. It negatively impacts the neighborhood. It negatively impacts the character of Cape Cod, the character of Falmouth, and it will not, if the ultimate goal is to provide more contractors yards and more accessibility to the business person of the town. It does not provide that, because the other properties that are closest here are residential. Yes, we are an agricultural AA, but we are residences, and we will not be changing our properties, so it won't meet the goal of what the town is trying to do in light of that. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Thank you again.
Further comment from the public? Yes, sir?
Yes, please.
My name is Hugh O'Doherty, and I'm the co-owner of 715 Thomas Landers Road, which is approximately right down here. And it's, as we discussed back in May, it's either 1.2 or 1.3 acres. There's a disagreement between my wife and I as to what we believe the deed actually says. Can I ask questions of the board?
Sure.
Okay, good. First of all, can I see the photograph of my house?
It's those two. It's not.
My property. The ones that...
I'm sorry, it's here. I did not know what those were.
So there's no, actually no photographs of my property. Okay. I got the impression from what Ms. Moynihan said, she was showing pictures of our property, the neighbors that live nearby. And so to clarify, that's not correct. I was not correct in understanding that. So, okay, good. Ms. Moynihan used the phrase "in this particular area," and then she went on to talk about a cell phone tower, and a dump, and a few other things. I would get the impression from hearing that if I didn't live there, that these things are actually in this particular area. And when I describe this particular area, I'm talking about basically where this property is. The property question, the neighbor across the street, my property, and the other property that was spoken of earlier. Now, if you are, if we're talking about that particular area, then there is no cell tower, there is no dump in that area. In fact, the only thing you really see are the, if you're looking closely enough, is you're seeing the four properties as you're going up the hill towards the sign for the Research Park. And back in May, what I was, back in May when we first met, I was talking about the fact that in the minutes of the meeting from April 19th, Brian Curry was reported to have said that the area of Thomas Landers Road is, no longer has a residential flavor. At that time, Ms. Moynihan was saying that things are changing on Thomas Landers Road also. At that point, I asked you, the members of the board, to go ahead and depart either Route 28 or Route 28A and head east up the hill of Thomas Landers Road towards the park, and basically take a look at what you actually do see, as far as what the actual flavor is in that particular area, okay? And I ask you right now, Mr. Fox, have you done that?
Yes, actually, I have two listings on an area. I travel the road every single day.
Okay.
Year and a half.
So you do have an idea of what that particular area actually looks like?
Absolutely.
Can you see the cell phone tower from there?
It's not very far from there. The cell phone tower is up the street a little ways.
Can you see it from there?
I see it quickly as I go by, within a minute or two as I drive on the road.
Okay, but you can't see it from this particular neighborhood?
I couldn't speak to that. It's within a minute or two when I drive by.
Well, you said, can you ask some questions? I think it'd be more appropriate if you stayed with things that were more, remain to the general area there, and not specifically to whether or not we have been there or not.
Okay.
I think we should move ahead, and I don't want to stifle your comments, but I don't think that that would be terribly appropriate.
Okay. Well, others have had the opportunity to describe the area, and what I'm trying to do is clarify that the area may not be as described, okay? At least this particular area, and when I'm saying this particular area, basically from Route 28A or Route 28 up to the park, okay, which would be affected by a change in zoning in this particular neighborhood. So that's what I'm basically asking of you folks as members of the board, that before you vote on a decision to recommend or not recommend this, do you actually do drive through the neighborhood and take a look at what it actually does look like as far as being able to see cell phone towers and the dump and the other things that are in fact on Thomas Landers Road, but not in this particular section of Thomas Landers Road, the western section?
Might I interrupt you by telling you that when we have anything in front of the board here, we do site visits.
Okay, okay.
And it's customary for us to go generally with the staff and visit the sites that are in question.
Good.
And if we can't go with the staff, then we choose, some of us, because of conflicting schedules, we do go on our own. So I think you should have confidence that we are familiar with the area that's in question.
And I do. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. All right. And so, and when you do do that, you know, obviously, I'm asking you to take a look at it as far as the scenic resource that it is currently also, as far as, you know, conforming to some of the comprehensive plans' goals as far as trying to retain scenic resources in the town also. Okay? Well, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you for speaking. Other comments from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth, Precinct 5, Town Meeting Member. I have a couple of comments. I have the warrant as printed in the enterprise on September 16th, and I realize that this is an initial printing of the warrant, and I think the wording can change, and that the article numbers are probably not what they are in here, but we have two articles. We have Article 3, what in this paper is called Article 3, "To See If The Town Will Vote To Amend Chapter 240 Zoning Of The Code Of Falmouth," in the following manner. And I have a question there. And then we have something that is labeled Article 5, and this says, "To See If The Town Will Vote To Amend The Official Zoning Map Of The Town Of Falmouth, So As To Change The Existing Agricultural Double-A Zone By Rezoning From Agriculture Double-A To Light Industrial C, The, And At 740 Thomas B. Landers Road." So there is some kind of a typo in there, et cetera, shown on the Falmouth Assessor's Map. So I guess I do have a question, since this relates to the property owned by Mr. Hadad at 740 Thomas Landers Road. We actually seem to be discussing two different articles at this time. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
No, that is not correct.
That is not correct.
We are only discussing the petition article that Mr. Hadad is bringing forth to town meeting.
Thank you. So then my question on that would be, what was it supposed to say, rezoning agriculture double-A to light industrial C, the what? And at 740 Thomas Landers?
Should be land.
Land. An L in front of it. It's missing an L. The land.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, and I should have caught...
That's an enterprise typo, not a...
Thank you.
Not a typo.
All right, fine. So we're only talking about this property, and I would like to add to what's been said, that I drive through this area frequently, because I don't live far from here, and I have long been aware of the houses in this area, and I have felt that there was a distance to the cell tower. I'm not good on distance, so I'm not going to even imagine what the distance is, but I'm not, as I'm driving through there, I consider it residential, and then I do come to the cell tower after the tech park. So my impression is residential. Thank you.
Further comments from the public? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name is Steve Hadad. This is my brother John, my brother David. I am a resident of West Falmouth, and I too travel Thomas Landers Road. And I have a lot of the similar concerns that Mr. Henley has, in that Thomas Landers Road is a very deceptive road, in that as you do drive past, or you drive east, I think we all know that if you're not from here, you could be lulled into the feeling that this is a nice residential road. But very, very quickly, you're soon reminded, as the cement mixes, the dump trucks, the paving equipment, the landscapers, the people that move houses, it's a very, very busy, traveled, commercial road. I'm not going to speak tonight about the need for contractors yard, because I think we're all in agreement, there are needs for contractors yard. The real question is, is this an appropriate area? I would argue, this is far more an appropriate area for contractors yard than it is for residential homes. I think that once the steamship authority arrives with the vehicle trips, I think once the rink arrives with the vehicle trips, I think with future development of the Technology Park and the vehicle trips they're going to have there, this will, he's right. This could become the hub, or secondary hub of Falmouth, as much as Main Street is. But opening up the beginning of this to contractors, I mean, I'd like to clarify a few things. This term appropriate, I think he misspoke. There is dispute between the tool buyers and the engineers and the title insurance companies about the property line. It's not significant, but there's enough dispute. So what Mr. Henley spoke, appropriate, it might not, some landlord's going to decide what the appropriate property is. So this area, it's, I think that the various contractors, you know, you've heard the list, the, you know, Ficillo's on, the Loud Fuel's on, the Hamilton's on, the Sawmill, West Falmouth Aluminum, Dalby Escavation, Rosado, Green Pond. I take personal pride in Thomas Landers Road. It was me personally who convinced Dave Ficillo to buy seven acres of land that ran parallel behind his property, $160,000. A month later, I convinced my brother to buy the same seven acres of land, abutting it, two different properties for $400,000. That land came from the Bourne family. So there were two seven acres strips that were put together, and with the help of Tom Adams, Dave Ficillo, Loud Fuel, Gary Hamilton, you've developed a nice contractors area. This is what has transferred, I think we're all aware of this. I understand that the residents at that end of Thomas Landers Road could be upset. They've been there forever, they don't want the change. No one's asking them to leave. In fact, this is going to be one of the few times, and as everybody knows, I own Falmouth Real Estate, I think I give an opinion on values, this will be one of the few times that if a zoning change were to take place on the entire road of Thomas Landers Road, they would actually increase their values. I've heard it said that we don't want to, we're not going to leave, we're not going to give others to contractors, we don't care if this increases our values, but it will increase their values. There's no hardship here. And so that the same trucks, the same increased vehicle trips are going to happen when the other two big entities come, but nothing's really changing for them. My brother has made a decision that this is an appropriate spot for him. He knows there's a need, he deals with contractors. So I would urge you to vigorously support this, because I think you're on the right track with the light industrial C. I hear it every single day in my field. Where can I go? And my brother John did say something that makes some sense to me, and I hear it all the time. We all know, after we get a little bigger, I don't want to be a tenant, I want to own. All of these small guys want to own their own piece. Not everybody can afford to buy the big tract of land or the big warehouse. My brother John is giving some of these smaller guys, as Dave Ficillo has, an opportunity to own a bay here or there. Nothing's going to change on the property. He could plant potatoes on this clearing if he wanted to. There's plenty of opportunities for deer to migrate. Every contractor on that Thomas Landers Road has a deer card. They have some opportunities. So I would urge you not to support it, but to vigorously support it, because I think you're on the right track with the zoning of light industrial C. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman? Yes? Mr. Hadad's presentation has just raised, well, I think is a point of order. I'm not talking about the substantive issue here at all, but if, and this is a question from Mr. Curry. Mr. Hadad had said that the property that we are describing in the warrant to be rezoned is not well-defined amongst the persons who have claims to that property, and it may well have to be resolved in land court, that the title insurers and banks and lawyers have disputes as to the exact property lines here. Is it proper for us to rezon with that kind of uncertainty? That's a point of order.
I'm not sure if a point of order, as it is, you're not looking for a little guidance on the matter. My guidance, the board now is, so we continue your hearing.
Oh, no, we should continue the hearing, but that's something that we should be looking into, because if we cannot...
You're not the competent forum to determine anyone's property rights, where any lines are.
No, and I'm not saying we should.
I would just continue your hearing, gather this information, and if you need it in the council, we'll see what happens.
No argument on that. What I'm saying is, that that's something that we want to run by council. Can we rezon property when there is no clear-cut definition of what the property is? And if there is a real dispute out there, shouldn't we just defer, not say no, not say yes? That's a question that we need to have resolved here.
You're at the information gathering phase of your deliberations. Gather the information and sit down and deliberate. But we're not going to make that decision here tonight. I have your guidance and you have mine.
But that's a question we have to answer before we decide anything else.
Got it. I appreciate your concern, but as far as my brother's concerned, that is the real property. Period. There is no, he's not delusional that he owns just this much. As far as he's concerned, he owns all of what he's presented here tonight. There's no pending legal matters in any court in anywhere in America. So I merely gave you that piece of information, not to be used against me. I merely was trying to define the inappropriateness of this. It's not inappropriate, and I didn't want anybody to be misled that this was some deception here. I think inappropriate is deception. I was really trying to bring some, a little bit more knowledge to what was going on here, not to be used against.
If the property description that is being given to town meeting for that is to be rezoned is subject to no dispute, then you would be right. If there is a dispute as to what that property description, that deed and title reference refers to, if there is a dispute as to that, I question whether we can rezon it without knowing exactly what it is.
Okay, that's, that's right. We will take that into consideration.
I think that's something that we should.
Between now and when we.
That we should be aware of.
And when we discuss it, right?
That's all I'm saying. We should be aware of.
Is there any further discussion?
That has nothing to do with the merits of this, of this issue.
Any further comments from the public? Anyone new, has anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Okay, then, Ms. Hayward.
Nancy Hayward, West Falmouth, Precinct Five. I did not mention when I was here before that I would like the board to clearly figure where the wildlife corridor is. This has been a long-established wildlife corridor. I remember Judy Stetson arguing on town meeting floor for the establishment of the wildlife corridor. I've spoken other times when businesses were before you, but please pay attention to where that corridor is and protect it. Thank you.
Mr. Henley, you have another comment?
Yes, just love to rebuttal Mr. Haddad's comments. I'd like to, you know, speak, our drawings at 710 Thomas B. Landers Road are public record. They are registered with the Barnstable Registry of Deeds. It is official survey, very Anderson surveying. I have spoke to Tom Bunker from VSS Design. This is not an official survey. He has not done an official survey on this property. He's, and I spoke to him, can you defend your measurements? And he said, no, I cannot defend my measurements. And that's why he reformatted his drawing to match the survey that was done by Ken Anderson. Until he does official survey of this property, he cannot go to court and rebut against what Mr. Anderson has already defended. And for the board's clarification, Anderson's surveying has a long reputation of surveying on Cape Cod. And he has currently, and multiple times been used by Barnstable County to resolve surveying issues between two different surveyors. He's called out to re-survey and check other people's work. So I'm very confident in his ability. So this lot is on, Tom Bunker changed the lot size. On the new drawing that I presented to you, the block parcel is 2.25 acres. And the wildlife corridor was included in this drawing. This, this drawing was given to me last week. This is, this is the more current version than the drawing that's posted here. Thank you.
What is the, what is the acreage on that large drawing there? What does that indicate?
This large drawing here says it's 2.68.
Thank you.
And so, I'm just stating the facts. Oh, one other issue is, under the current zoning, there's some issues that I'd like to see resolved before this parcel is put forward for light industry C. One was the encroachment in the wildlife corridor without proper permitting through the Department of Natural Resources and this board. The second being, there's been a complaint filed with the zoning department. It is a legal three-family residence that's been converted in the single-family residence here that's on, that's existing. It's been converted to three illegal apartments without any permits. I've already talked to the zoning department about that. So I'd like to see these issues under the current zoning resolved before we give the owners of this property access to a new zoning that is less restrictive. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yes, sir, you haven't spoken yet? Oh, Ms. Moynihan?
Yeah.
Are you deferring to Ms. Moynihan?
Yes, sir.
First of all, as far as the survey goes, we request on the warrant that the land as shown on the Falmouth Assessors map be rezoned. And we give a map and a parcel number. The Falmouth Assessors map follows the meets and bounds description on the deed. This property has been surveyed multiple times. We know this survey is correct. Mr. Henley's attempt to thwart this rezoning with this survey issue, I think, is, is something that is not appropriate. And it, the warrant can stand as it's written because of the way it is drafted. The statements that have been made tonight, I think, also are not appropriate. To make the suggestion that contractors can do as they wish with this area, which is a direct quote, that's just irresponsible. We have, any development of this property would be subject to review of the wildlife corridor, as it was when it was approved for a dog kennel many years ago. This was the site that went to the zoning board of appeals and the planning board, onsite plan review for an approval of a dog kennel. The wildlife corridor was documented and it was taken into account. Nothing would be different if there was a use on this site that was allowed in the LIC district. Those are development issues. And that's why I raised the point of order because we've now spent a considerable amount of time on development issues which aren't rezoning issues. Site plan review would control the wildlife corridor. The design review committee would control how the building looks. The zoning bylaw would control the setback for the building, which would be mandated under site plan review. The landscape requirements of the zoning bylaw would be enforced onsite plan review to address buffers to the street and buffers to the abutters. So we do have checks in place. We have permitting mechanisms in place. Any review would be subject to natural heritage review through MESA if in fact the site is in a designated rare species habitat zone, which I don't know for sure. That would be subject to review. So all of those things would be taken care of. To supply photographs of particular areas without any kind of survey or plan showing where they, they sit on the property, you can't, you can't give any weight to that. And as you shouldn't, because this is a hearing on a rezoning article. This is not a development proposal. If you had a site plan review application before you, that information might be relevant, but you don't. We're not asking for the O'Doherty or the Henley properties or the other property across the street to be rezoned. Nobody's talked about the north side of Thomas Landers Road. We're asking for the south side of Thomas Landers Road for this parcel. When I talked about the buffered area, I was talking about the O'Doherty property in that location, which is heavily evergreened. There's a buffer there to the street already. You have photographs that I've given you of an existing home occupation or home occupations across the street. So we have an area that is different. It is distinct, and you've heard a tremendous amount of evidence on that. But I think it's important to keep in mind that there would be control on the development of this property through the permitting process. There would be buffers to the uses. And Mr. Henley has said repeatedly that the zoning would be less restrictive. I disagree. The setbacks are greater in the LIC district than they would be in the agricultural district. Mr. Haddad could go in there tomorrow and build a nursery. He could have all his landscaping equipment onsite as accessory to that nursery. He could have retail traffic coming in and buying products at his nursery. What we're asking for is something less than that here. And I think we need to get back to that. This is not a single residence district. This is agricultural district with many permitted uses. The Elks could apply for a special permit and use this as their site if they wanted to, and if that was an arrangement that was to be made. Any other nonprofit club. So let's get back to what this can be used for and what the Haddads are asking for here and put it into perspective in terms of what else is down Thomas Landers Road as you approach As for the spot zoning, I mentioned in my presentation, when you have a municipal purpose that's clearly documented here to find areas for small contractors, that goes against any claim of spot zoning. We have that here. We don't have an existing light industrial C district for this to be adjacent to. So the fact that it's not adjacent to an existing light industrial C district or a light industrial district for that matter does not mean it's spot zoning. You have comparable uses close by, you have comparable uses across the street, whether or not that land is zoned light industrial C or light industrial. This is not spot zoning. And we'd ask you to please review the strategic plan of the town. Keep in mind that these areas are needed and that this is an extremely appropriate area for the zoning. Thank you.
Yes, sir. You passed. Further comments from the public? Yes, ma'am? Please.
Eileen Ryan O'Doherty, 715 Thomas B. Landers Road. I'm just a little puzzled. You said across the street of 740 Thomas Landers Road, there is similar uses. No, but if Ms. Moynihan could answer that because that's the house next door to me, so I don't really know what we're talking about, and I'm just confused.
She, I'm guessing that she's talking about, I'm not going to.
Claudia Bourne's property is what's across the street from 740. That's a little bungalow house. So that's why I'm puzzled.
I believe she, would you restate what you said was across the street, please, Ms. Moynihan? I'm not going to interpret what you said.
I'm going to try.
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask Ms. Moynihan to speak because she's the one who said.
I've given you the picture of the property that has an address at 681. Okay, there's a house there, and in back of it, there is clear storage of contractor vehicles and equipment. And it's in the photographs. That's what I'm talking about, across the street. Mr. Haddad.
681.
Are you inferring there's a contractor's yard there?
It's a home occupation.
That's about Claudia Bourne, your architect, right?
You're saying a home occupation is a contractor's yard? Is that what you're saying?
It's not going to be from your property. It's right here.
It's about you, though, right? You made a complaint?
It doesn't affect me.
Mr. Haddad can describe the neighborhood in detail if you feel that's necessary, but I think it's clear in the photographs what's there. And the address is on the back.
Eileen O'Doherty again. Thank you. And I wanted to just say, you said the property was 681. We're talking about 740. So across from 740 is not 681. So just point of interest there. Thank you.
Further comments from the public? I'm sorry, I thought you asked, sorry. Further comments from the public? Yes, sir?
Hi, Hugh O'Doherty again from 715 Thomas Landers Road. Just a clarification again, and it involves this particular area thing again, that the house that she's talking about, that Ms. Moynihan is talking about, is again up over the hill, well beyond this particular area. It's actually rather, much closer to the cell phone tower, for example, than it is to Mr. Haddad's property depicted here. So it's, it's a pretty good distance away. Granted, it is across the street, since this is the street and it's on the north side of the street, but there are many, many things from here to the North Pole that are on the other side of the street. And I just wanted to point out this now, right here, which, which I was led to believe when I heard that the photographs of, of the house across the street, I thought that's what she was talking about. So wanted to clarify that, if you'd like to.
All right, thank you. Anyone, anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Yes, sir?
I just wanted to clarify a couple of things about that area that they were talking about. This particular property that directly abutted B has had a contractor activity there for a lengthy period of time. There's a present contractor on Thomas Landers Road who bought property on Thomas Landers Road after renting from the Henley parcel. That's one of the houses there, five houses there. If you go up, this is a long, full shallen Mrs. Bourne's property. She carved off the back end of her property and gave it to her son Kevin Bourne. He has an excavator in his yard, he has ten-whealers in his yard, and he has a tree company. He's operating two contractors off his property right now. So they're in the middle. So whatever they want to say about it, you drive down the road tomorrow morning, look to your left and you'll see that equipment. If you look, well, I can give it to you off, okay, so whatever distance you want to use or the North Pole, the other guy has a box van, over 10,000 GBW in his yard. You drive down the road, you look across the street, you'll see that. So out of the five residences down there, one had a contractor yard. Two, there's an excavator and a ten-wheeler parked in the yard. Three, the guy's got a box van. The lady is really nice and polite, and her property is totally evergreened in, her and the gentleman who's there. And I, and I understand their opinion, I understand why they're upset, but there's probably a reason why they surrounded their property with evergreen trees. Because when the ten-whealers are going down the road, and the cement mixers are going down the road, and the roll-off trash trucks are going down the road, okay, and Sammy LaRusso's trucking in material, in and out, and Cavos is going up and down that road with this 50-foot road layout. And I don't know, if you guys can just look to the right and look at the windmills, and you know where the sewage treatment plant is, this is insane. This is insane. This is the industrial area in the town of Falmouth. It's not for the next two years, or five years, or 10 years. It's for the next 50, 100. It's for multiple generations down the road. So they could live there till they're in the ground. But down the road, my kids, my kids' kids, or other generations, at what point do we say, hey, I know not in my backyard, but enough is enough. Drive down the road, or stand there. Just stand there for 20 minutes, nine o'clock, and look and watch those trucks roll down that road.
Any other comments from the public?
Can I move to close the hearing?
Okay. I need a motion to close the hearing and take it under advisement. Abot?
Yes.
Second. Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Say, thank you all for coming on that particular issue. Take one minute to, if you choose to leave the meeting at this time.
Will we be discussing this on the 18th? Is that the?
Yes, the 18th. We'll discuss it on the 18th. We'll be discussing these amongst the planning board on the 18th of this month.
How much vote do we need to change the zoning of?
How much do we need to create to zone?
I thought it was like 12.
10.
But it's either 10 or 10.
We got about that.
We got that.
This is 12.
This is for discussion.
Something's got it.
We just listened.
Yeah.
Right.
That's right.
I think this is where I did my first game in. I think this is where I did my first game in.
I'm going to reconvene the meeting. The next article, petition's article under consideration is to see if the town of Falmouth will vote to rezone 22 Nathan Ellis Highway, map 05, section 09, lot 001. Business redevelopment, ground level parking only, and 28 Nathan Ellis Highway, map 05, section 09, parcel 007A, lot 001. Business redevelopment, medical and professional use only, and 00 Nathan Ellis Highway, map 05, section 09, parcel 007A, lot 002. General residential. On a petition by Mr. Menazian. Menazian, Menazian. I don't know if I'm right. And so, Mr. Menazian, are you here, and would you like to speak to your article?
My name is Antrinig Menazian, and I own 28 Nathan Ellis Highway. I have learned in the past, over the few years that I've been petitioning this zoning change, that the town of Falmouth doesn't like uncertainty, and the town meeting members don't like uncertainty. So in this article, there is no uncertainty. If you zone the Beach House parking lot, business redevelopment, it extends the zone to the end of that parking lot, and it gives it an exact definition, because there are times that the Beach House could use a two-level parking garage or a hydraulic parking garage. But for all intents and purposes, if you zone it exactly what it's used for, there's no manipulation. And quite honestly, the Beach House will be very busy once they start building on that 211 acres in front of Ballymead, because we definitely need a medical facility. And so then, my property, 28 Nathan Ellis, has an exact use, which I have petitioned only in different verbiage for the last two and a half years, because what concerns me—it actually concerns me very much—is if you read the definition of business redevelopment and all the things you can do in business redevelopment, it allows a lot of manipulation, as well as general residential. Now, if I had petitioned general residential for 28 Nathan Ellis Highway, I would then have to petition or ask the zoning board for a special permit. That increases the uses of general residential. So then it gives you more opportunities, which concerns me, because I want to control collateral damage for my neighbors. I want to have a doctor, a dentist, a lawyer, an accountant, and that's it. If someone goes in and says, well, we want to do in-home use and we want to sell cake, they have to present it to the building inspector, the commissioner of building, and he will say, that is not one of the uses allowed, because this property is zoned, medical and professional. And so it eliminates it. Now, Michael Duffany, a town meeting member, asked or mentioned that he didn't understand why I was handcuffing myself like this. Well, when you have many people involved and the greater good of the town, you want to contribute something that is not going to be a runaway, is not going to create problems. And Robert Amen himself said, that would be a great place for a law office. And this is my goal, to give this to someone—a professional, not to Krispy Kreme or Kentucky Fried Chicken or anything of that nature. And in this article, it eliminates that threat. The Beach House parking lot, ground level parking. If the Beach House were to change their use, that would kind of void the ground level parking, because they would repetition their properties for a different use, as I said. If we do decide to build a medical facility, which CLSV has been given permission to build at least 125 units of assisted living, the Beach House is going to be very busy feeding all those people working on that project. So the ground level parking is kind of a safeguard, but not a checkmate. The medical and professional is something that I want to restrict that property to, because I know it's a better thing to do. And the general residential for my neighbor will complete the zone on—I believe that's the north side of 151. Now technically, the two properties, the Fitzgeralds and the Mannings, could exist in a general residential zone, but don't need to be brought into it, because their egress is on Beaman's. So we don't need to complicate or change that zone, because it fits. It goes from a B2 to a residential. It's abrupt. It's a larger spectrum, a bigger gamut, but it has coexisted since the mid-'60s and before. On my side, if we do the general residential, business redevelopment, and then the pizza shop, it finishes that zone. Robert Nahigian has administrative relief, and he has also enough room to build a three-bedroom house attached to that two-story garage that is on his property where he runs his business from. And it's a mixed use, but he has petitioned that, and it has been recorded. And then the next property, which is his, Robert Nahigian's, about summer winds. So it kind of gradually goes up that north side. And as I said, I felt this was more definitive. There's no manipulation in it. And one thing I do want to mention, as far as the general residential property, it cost me $19,000 to tell you this fact, the easement does not exist. And Marigula Triboulis can call N-Star, tell them to move the pole and move the wires paralleling 151, and built her house behind the wires in a paper easement, and then she's not confined to this little house that's the size of my garage. So I've done my research. It took me a while to learn, but I know this is right, and it's not going to hurt anybody else. It's not going to impose on my neighbors. And so this is why I've stayed fast on medical and professional use. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before we go further, I checked with Brian, and we do have to take a vote of the board to continue after 10. So I would move that we continue.
It's brought to my attention that the board needs to vote to continue after 10 o'clock. And so I will entertain—
I'll make a motion. I move it.
Okay, but do we put a—to 11?
To 11.
Do that? Okay.
To 11. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Staying. Continue. Thank you, Pat, for bringing that up.
It's been a long time since we've had you there.
Chairman?
Yes?
I just have a question. Do we have a plan of this—we're talking about? I don't—I've heard him talk about all these things. Have a plan?
Well, Mr. Menazian, I would recommend that in the future, and especially if you're going to speak at town meeting, that you have a map in front of the people that you're talking to, because, you know, I can remember a good deal of it, but it's been a year, or six months, maybe. But anyway—
I wasn't aware that you remember so much.
Well, even—I— I'm a town meeting member, and I've seen you three or four times, but usually when we're front, everyone brings a plan, and we can see what you're talking about. You were making references to the property beside the property, above the house down the street, and I couldn't follow you.
Yeah, that would help dramatically. And even though I've heard your presentations before, I need a visual. Okay, question for Mr. Menazian from the board? None? At this time, I'll entertain comments from the public. Yes, sir?
My name's Kevin Murphy. My wife used to be a part owner of the Beach House property, and for disclosure purposes, I have a purchase and sale agreement on the property. Do not own the business, but I have a purchase and sale on both the Beach House property across the street, as well as what is currently the parking lot that Mr. Menazian is talking about rezoning. That particular parking lot is under a special permit for a parking facility, meaning a parking lot. I understand Mr. Menazian's zoning, and I've been worked very favorably in my own mind for it, for him to be able to do something in his property. Unfortunately, every time he comes forward, every one of his proposals or the proposals that this zoning board has brought forward has had some restrictions on the property that I already have and interested in, meaning he wants to rezone this, his property, but at the same time restrict the Beach House parking lot from only being a parking lot ever, if that's what I'm getting from the zoning article. It would be parking. If he wants to do, zone his property for business and professional, please do so, but do not restrict it a butter from what they can eventually do with their own property. He's merely trying to avoid a spot zoning. I can understand that. Currently, the property is being used for parking, but I surely don't want to be limited to at some day being able to use that property for another means. I don't know what that means might be. It might not be anything, but I surely can't sit here and say that, you know, a property that has been zoned for many years have it a butter, try to change the zoning of your own property to benefit themselves. I don't have a problem with his zoning change. If he were merely to leave the Beach House, if you didn't want to go spot zoning, merely leave the Beach House parking lot as redevelopment zoning, and then move to the next part of the zoning to keep it all in—to avoid spot zoning. But to put a restriction on the Beach House parking lot, that would be redevelopment, ground level parking for eternity. Quite candidly, I think that's unfair to the property owner who has an investment there. I'm representing the current property owner, Richard Davis, as well as myself, who has an interest in buying that property. Thank you.
Other comments from the public? Yes, sir?
Jeff Fitzgerald, I live on Beaman Lane, directly across 151 from the property in question. I—probably for more aesthetic reasons than any other reason, I moved here two and a half years ago, and I was told that that property had been unfinished for at least a decade. And because this is my permanent home, I was hoping that something could happen across the street. It's currently being used or unused for a parking lot for heavy equipment, as far as I can tell. And I'd encourage you to—without affecting Mr. Murphy's property, I have no interest in that parking lot, but I sure would like to see something happen, and a medical professional office would work for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Further comments in the public? Not yet, Mr. Menazian, because I'm going to wait until everybody who hasn't spoken yet has an opportunity.
You do have a letter in your correspondence file, Mr. Chairman, from a butter to the property.
Okay.
So the written would come in.
All right. I will look at that. But I'm also asking for—
I'm going to see it here.
Where is it? Oh, here it is. Anyone else to speak to this issue at this time, who hasn't spoken yet? Before you speak again, Mr. Menazian, I'm going to read this letter from a butter, I This letter is dated September 29, 2011, to myself, chairman of the planning board. Dear Mr. Herbst, I am the owner of the lot adjacent to Mr. Menazian, known as 0 Nathan Ellis Highway, Lot 2. I am writing in response to the article on petition by Mr. Menazian regarding the rezoning of my property at Nathan Ellis Highway. This article is planned for the public hearing on October 4, 2011. First, I'd like to point out that Mr. Menazian has filed a petition regarding my property without my prior knowledge or any discussion. I would also like to articulate my position on this proposed article. As stated in the past, I am in agreement with the proposed zoning changes that the planning board presented to the town meeting last November, 2010. The past proposed amendment would rezone my property from single residence B to general residence, changing the premises to a general residence zoning along with a proposed setback from 75 feet to 25 feet downtown standard, for the area is a thoughtful and workable solution for this area of Route 151 and would facilitate reasonable development. The proposed changes that were brought forth by the planning board would also allow for professional offices and obvious benefit to Mr. Menazian. He has petitioned for this change for many years in order to pursue the development of medical offices. His property has remained unfinished for several years. I also would like to mention that Mr. Menazian is in litigation with me and the town of Falmouth regarding a variance which the Falmouth zoning board granted, allowing construction of a structure on my lot within the setback. Thank you for your consideration in this manner. Signed, Magnolia Triboulis. Marigula Triboulis. Okay. Now, anyone else to speak? Mr. Menazian, you want to speak again?
I just wanted to clarify that I'm not trying to damage my neighbor by saying ground level parking. And ground level parking can be amended on town meeting floor. That would give that property business redevelopment, and all that goes with business redevelopment. So I'm suggesting that ground level parking, as I mentioned, if they change the use of the Beach House, then they might change the use of that parking lot, because it's hand and glove. It cannot exist without the parking lot. So trying to hurt my neighbors, not my intention, but trying to shield a greater amount of uses is what I'm trying to do. Also, I did some research, and unless there's—not to my knowledge—a special permit's been given within the last two years. The reason why they can use that property, which is residential B, as a parking lot is because all the cars that park on that parking lot are registered. And that is the stipulation, that is the manipulation for using that parking lot. And I checked with the building commissioner on that. My neighbor, Marigula Triboulis, I urge her to call Edison, and the 25-foot setback that they're hoping for would then show prejudice to the 75-foot setback that was designated in 1985 for the 151 corridor. And her property would be more valuable if she took my advice, because N-Star has to do it for free. So that property can be corrected and conformed, and a plan could be presented, and that property could have been sold three times. But somebody's not guiding her properly. So in closing, I'm not trying to hurt anybody. I think I'm making a forward motion. I have a lot of feedback from the town meeting members who signed my article. And as I said, if it pleases everyone to take the ground level parking out and give that property the full business redevelopment use, then by all means, call me, let— that property the full business redevelopment use, then by all means, call me, let me know. Send word with somebody. Ms. Joyce in the Planning Board has my phone number, and I'll find someone to amend it on the town meeting floor, if everyone feels comfortable about it. I'm just trying to move forward at Falmouth.
Further comments from the public? Any more comments on the board? Can I entertain a motion?
I have a question. Is it even appropriate for us to discuss it without a plan in front of us? I thought that was a requirement.
No. Well, I believe we can get a plan.
Because I couldn't follow him at all.
Right. We're not going to discuss it. So when we discuss it next meeting, we will have a plan in front of us.
Sure. Great. I could provide one right now.
I think we're ready. I make a motion to be closed the hearing. Okay?
I would second that.
And take it under advisement. Do I have a second?
Second.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stay. Thank you. That concludes the petition articles for the full town meeting. The next item, for those of you who are here for those articles, if you're free to leave now, please. You don't have to, but you may. The next item on the agenda is discussion for the applicant, a site plan review to construct a gas station with real retail space and a drive-through donut shop on 1.13 acres located at 212 T-Ticket Highway in Falmouth. And for the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and all board members. For the record, my name is Steve McKenzie, and I represent 212 T-Ticket LLC. On behalf of my clients and their team, and the neighbors and anyone else who's still here interested in this hearing, thank you for voting to go on till 11 o'clock. We hope not to take you all that time. I know you have at least one more matter behind us, so we'll try to be as brief as we can. This is a continuation of the hearings that took place on August 30th. At that time, this was the plan that we presented to the board. I think this, I don't think Tom was here that night. I think the best way to try to go through where we're at today is to quickly describe, again, very briefly, what we presented to you before, show you that we listened to the comments that the board members had, as well as we listened to the comments and concerns of the neighbors, mostly the only neighbors that came who were interested, who live up on Figurita Way, which allows us on this particular side. This is a piece of property that has a lane, which is a public use area in the beginning, almost entirely business to, or a very small piece of agricultural being in the back. There's an existing gas station, a car wash, and service station, this is a gas or service base in there. The proposal is for redevelopment of this site into a new gas station, eliminate the car wash, eliminate the service base, put in a Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through. The Dunkin' Donuts will move out of the Strip Plaza. 212 T-Ticket LLC is a little delighted company, home of the Fazookos family. The Fazookos also own Strip Plaza next door, under a different entity. We would be putting any, moving the Dunkin' Donuts over here, propose drive-through and a retail space. The current pumps run perpendicular 28. We're changing them to run parallel because it works much better for traffic flow and circulation. It's much better designed, more modern gas stations are designed that way. It's officially shown to lie, bring a truck, for example, towing a boat, it works much better. There were some concerns. There were concerns about the buffer to Figurita Way, this is presidential use back here. This issues all of the rest of T-Ticket Highway. There was concerns about, should I say, the buffering here. There was a request to see if we could move the building and the canopies. I think Richard asked for 20 feet. We took a look at that. We talked about the fact that the zoning bylaw requires seven stacking spaces. We, this plan produced 12. There was concern that Dunkin' Donuts might need more. It's a successful operation. Could we do something about getting more spaces in there? There was also concern about where the menu ordering board was in proximity, which was about 80 feet from the corner of the closest house. So we sat down, we looked at this quite a bit, and we came up with a new plan. We originally thought the first plan was an excellent plan, but we think this is a even much better plan. We had a chance to slide everything over five feet, so we moved the canopy, the building, the parking, everything five feet closer to our Strip Plaza. Box would take up two boxes, it needs space for the drive-through and the escape route. That allows us a much larger green area on this side. You can see this is considerably bigger than what was there before. There was a request from the neighbors for some additional buffering, so we agreed to put a fence running from the parking corner down to the 24-inch maple tree. We're keeping the mature trees on site that we can. We've also changed the configuration of the drive-through. One of the other concerns, if we look back real quick, was the location of the loading area. The truck would come in through the drive-through, sit over here, there was a concern about going back and forth across through the drive-through. So what we did was we made a change. We lengthened the drive-through by meandering it around. It now has 17 stacking spaces, which is five more than what we had before in a full ten block, the bylaw requires. So this plan shows different types of vehicles that would be in here. We changed the loading zone. The loading zone is no longer in the drive-through lane anymore. There'll still be some, whether it's a chain or something across it to stop people from coming through, so people won't come out of the drive-through and then try to escape up here. We have the escape route on this end. There was a concern about having the tanks in the public use district. We did check with Mr. Gordon, he didn't have an issue with that, but it was brought as an issue here, it would be something we'd have to adjust the zoning, we still need a special permit, that's our next step. The drive-through, we relocated the tanks out of the public use district, put them over here. So what we've done is we shifted everything five feet in this direction. We've moved the menu board, which was about 80 feet from the house, excuse me, 103 feet previously, it's now 140 feet. So it's much farther away from the neighbor who lives here. We're going to maintain, we have a live team with us tonight. We have Tom Bunker from BSS Design, who is a development site planner. Heather Wright from Heather Wright Landscape, who's a landscape architect, she'll be here to talk to you tonight about the increased buffering that we're putting in, and the increased landscape, we're going to try and buffer the noise from there. Brian Beisel, I hope you pronounce his name, right, from Conley Associates, did our traffic impact study. And Eric Eschanda, who is the Dunkin' Donuts franchisees owner, is also here to address any operational, questions of operational needs, questions that Dunkin' Donuts has if the board might have any questions about. So we have a live team, and each one will speak to any particular aspect of this plan that we might have tonight. So this is our new plan. This is what we've come up with. We think it's a big improvement. We think it addresses a lot of the questions that the board had back in our study, but also addresses a lot of the concerns that the neighbors have. So as I say, we've increased the buffer, we've provided some fencing, we've moved the boarding board almost another 40 feet away. We've provided 10 more spaces than is required in the bylaw, and we relocated the tanks. The other thing, there was some talk about one-way traffic. We're actually proposing, we're still proposing one-way traffic. If this was only a Dunkin' Donuts with a drive-through, that one-way traffic in and out would be fine. The problem is with, especially with the gas station, is cars have gas tanks on either side of the car, which means that if somebody coming in here wants to come in here, and I've informed interviewed about 20 people, who've all said that if it was an issue here with one-way, they couldn't get in, they'd go down the street to the corner with this big gas station, with the Segate, the Mobile, and one of the Johnny Hattie stations. So we'd like to keep this as two-way traffic. Anybody that's parking over here can back out and get in and come out this way. Also, from a traffic management standpoint, we have a unique opportunity here, and the Fazookos family owns both of these properties. So in order to mitigate traffic coming in and out, which you would have with independent properties, we have the ability for someone from, who's accessing one of the businesses in Strip Plaza, to come this way to get gas, or just come in, get coffee, and back out and go over here, without having to come back out 28 and then back in this way. So this helps mitigate the traffic. It's a beautiful thing with this average, and see this in a lot of other towns in other states, and it just happens to be unique, because my clients own both of these pieces of property. If it was two independent properties, we wouldn't have the ability to do this. But this helps with traffic regulation. And I'm trying to be brief, given the hour, and do appreciate you staying late. I'll answer any questions you have now, and then I have some others.
Just another quick suggestion. It's good you've relocated the menu order board further away. I would also reorient it so that the speakers do not face backwards towards any residential properties. You could reorient it so that the speakers face towards the commercial property, away from the, the way this looks to me, it looks like the speakers are going back to another residential parcel.
Actually, this is part of the property, this is part of the property, this is part of the property, almost, the Fazookos. This could be moved slightly this way, so it's angled a little more this way.
Angled a little more so that all is directed out, none of it's going back towards, towards the residential, because directionality is part of that, you know, when the voice is coming out of that speaker.
We could move it slightly, Richard. The concern we have is if farther we get up here, then it impacts the Dunkin' Donuts operation with the cars queuing up, because if folks inside don't have enough time to prepare the water.
I'm just talking about which direction the speakers are in, that's all. Other questions from the board? Mr. McKenzie? All right, and if you want other people in your group to speak, please feel free to do so at this time.
Thank you. Heather, you want to discuss the landscaping plan?
You are?
I'm Heather Wright. I've Heather Wright Landscape Design, sorry for the record.
I know that, but a lot of other people don't.
To save time, I'll just comment quickly. We've made, I've made no changes to the front. I did want to comment, the prior plan did not have the flagpole on it, and we are keeping the flagpole in that area. In this, in this buffer along Figurita Way, between the two trees, I've added three taller large arborvitae. The arborvitae that we had in the back were here. I've changed the species of some of the plants. These are the maximum rhododendrons, they get 15, 20 feet high. Where the fences, I've kept the native viburnums. These still grow up to be about 12 feet high, so they'll be double the size of any fence. And the hydrangeas on either side, here in the shade of the maple trees, which we're keeping, grow to a typical 15, 20 feet high. And a hedge along the road here with the winter berry. This is a plant that is a stiff hedge. Think of it as a hostile, privet hedge that grows up to about a nine-foot height with evergreens in front. Keeping the lawn so that there's good visibility out to the road for these parking spaces. There's been no change to the plants by the building here. These are native, or the ornamental grasses and some evergreens, so there'll be no bees, and there'll be interest throughout the winter. In the drive-through area, to kind of screen the back of the building, there are three large Leland cypress, which will form a nice big evergreen mass. And we're still screening the walk-in cooler with a juniper, our eastern red cedar cultivars, so the back will be screened. The dumpsters to the rear will also be screened with, again, some more of the junipers. And right over the septic field, which is hot, I've put in some butterfly bush. They have a presence most of the year, and kept the purple leaf sand sherry. And we've added some more plants along this area. We had Leland cypress before, but I've added another large arborvitae, and two smaller because it does get a little bit narrow, and added some more trees. These are, again, some eastern red cedar cultivars, and kept the other ornamental plants. Still a fair amount of lawn interrupted to assist with snow deposits, should it ever snow in Falmouth. And I think that's it. If you have any questions.
Yeah, thank you. Does the board have any questions? Ms. Wright? Thank you.
Tom Bunker with BSS Design. I think Steve and Heather have covered most of it. One thing I can point out is I did submit nitrogen loading calculations based on the existing use that's there now, including the house that's on the, it's taken down now, but the house is on Figurita Way. And there'll be less nitrates going into the, off of this site into the groundwater with this redevelopment than there was previously with the house. And there was a service station with three service bays, so factoring in those conditions, actually is a reduction in nitrate concentration with this plan. That's the only other thing I have to add.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? And Mr. Bunker? Yes, Pat?
These may have been answered before since I wasn't here, so excuse me if I'm repeating. But I have some difficulty with the, where the gasoline storage tanks are, and where the tanker trucks are going to have to be to unload the gas there, because if I'm looking at that correctly, it's going to block the egress of the cars coming out of the drive-through.
It would, it is intended that the tanker truck could be over in this area, but it won't block, I figured the truck can come in and would go through. This will have to be managed with, you know, between Dunkin' Donuts and the gas station and everything, you know, deliveries at the proper times. But it can come through here and pull over, and temporarily block this cut through, right over against the property line, and will not block the exit lane from the drive-through.
Okay.
Can I follow up on answering that, if I can?
Yeah, please.
Just to explain, we showed a plan the last time we were here that showed the circulation of the car, it could come in this way, or it could come in this way. The tanker truck is here for 20 minutes twice a week. This site of the gas station is going to be owned and controlled by the Fazookos. They're going to coordinate the timing of when those trucks come, so they don't come, for example, peak time when Dunkin' Donuts is there. It's set up now, when we move them out of here, the truck could be here and block a few spaces here, or it can straddle here, so that it won't block the drive-through. The 21, the drive-through is here, this is the escape route. It could straddle right here for 20 minutes twice a week. That's how long it takes. So it's only? Forty minutes a week. There would, there'd be any interruption, and the timing would be controlled by the Fazookos.
Okay, typically, how close can that timing be controlled?
It's, they're all on their tight schedule. It takes just about 20 minutes.
No, no, that's not what I'm talking about.
I'm sorry.
Dunkin' Donuts opens, what, 5:00 in the morning or something like that, and goes until wee small hours. And I know there are peak times, and I don't know to what extent you can actually control the delivery hours of the tanker trucks. I mean, can you say, okay, we've got a slow time now, oh, let's say 10:30 in the morning? I'm just pulling this out of you.
Sure.
So you've got to be there by 10:30.
Right.
Is that really, truly controllable to that point?
That's what the Fazookos, and they've talked to the folks who would be coming in and run the station, that they can control the times when the trucks will come.
Okay. Because that's important to me, that it not block that. The other thing I'm looking at, too, is with the circulation of the traffic here, you've got people backing out, and I don't know how wide that is, backing out of the parking spaces. I'm looking at safety of that.
You're talking about the aisle width?
Yes.
In front of the two retail spaces, the parking spots backing out into the?
Yeah, it meets all of the coach lines, so the calway. It's, it's? The aisle width meets this on requirement. It's 24 feet from the back line of a parking space to the edge of the canopy.
Edge of the canopy. Okay.
If I can help just one second, sorry. Brian Beisel from Conley Associates. 24 feet is the standard width for a two-way aisle, so if there's 24 feet between, they cannot be in a parking area, then that's wide enough for backing out and two ways of traffic, traveling traffic behind the parking spaces.
I think I'd rather see those angle parking for the ease, but I know, because you have to have the two-way, that then we run into problems there. It'd just make it more comfortable for me. What kind of retail space are we proposing?
We don't know yet what it's going to be. There was some discussion whether it'd be a convenience store that was bought up, and we're not proposing it to be a convenience store, it's just going to be retail space. We don't have a tenant for it yet.
Does that 24-feet requirement preclude the need for a fire lane?
The 24 feet is what the zoning bylaw requires for the aisle width. Nine by 18 spaces with 24, well, that's for any parking lot in Falmouth.
Because typically in these situations, I've seen a fire lane in front of the building where there's no parking, so the 24 feet eliminates that requirement. Okay. How is this building in the back corner accessed? Way up in the upper left-hand corner? If there is a driveway? corner. If there is a driveway, there is...
Yes, again?
I know, on the left-hand side.
The other side of this green line is part of Driftwood Plaza.
Okay, so there is a way to get around to that.
Right, it comes around to the back. There's nothing behind Driftwood Plaza.
Let's see. You mentioned a traffic study. When was that done and how, how long was it done for?
So, it's always here to address that.
Okay.
Hi there. To answer your question, we did traffic counts Labor Day weekend from Thursday before Labor Day, all the way through Tuesday after Labor Day. That was the tube. If you drive on Route 1, on Route 28 on T-ticket, you drive over the ATR, the Automatic Traffic Recorder. We also did counts at all four driveways, the two driveways for Driftwood Plaza and the two driveways for the gas station. We did those during the weekday AM peak hour, which, peak period, excuse me, 7:00 to 9:00 on the Thursday. And we also did it on Saturday morning from 9:00 to 11:00. And that was kind of a hybrid peak hour. Typically, the peak hour for a Saturday midday is 11:00 to 1:00. But since Dunkin' Donuts does so much business, so much of their business is coffee, they really are generating more in the morning. And to address your question, anytime late afternoon would be a good time for deliveries. Dunkin' Donuts has a very high peak early in the morning, again, because of the coffee. If you see all their commercials trying to sell sandwiches and everything, they're trying to get more business because their stores are pretty empty compared to what they are in the morning. So it's not as conflicted, as constricted as, as some other sites, if there was a, a different fast food use there. I can answer any other questions or give you a quick rundown of the study that, that we performed.
Sure. Three minutes.
All right. Basically, the existing Dunkin' Donuts is, is right here. We took all of the, we counted, like I said, all four driveways. We also counted specifically the people going into the Dunkin' Donuts. It's where we could determine, out of the traffic in and out of the Driftwood Plaza, how much is actually going to the Dunkin' Donuts. We then took all that traffic and moved it to this site and into these two driveways. We moved them, assuming the, you know, the use of the parking spaces and the drive-through. So we have more people coming in and into this driveway, so that they have access to these spaces and the drive-through, and more coming out of this driveway. Our studies, we've done a, a lot of studies on Dunkin' Donuts, and we find that during that morning peak hour or the peak period, which is the Dunkin' Donuts critical time, 60% of customers will choose to use a drive-through when they have the choice. So you're left with 40% using the parking spaces. Right now, as we expected, the Saturday morning peak, peak period, that hybrid of 9:00 to 11:00 was higher both for T-ticket highway traffic and the Dunkin' Donuts. The Dunkin' Donuts has 111 customers on the Saturday morning that we counted. Of course, Labor Day was after Irene, but it was a very nice weekend. All of the traffic volumes that we collected, both the daily and the peak hour, were higher than the 2010 summer peak numbers for, from the Cape Cod Commission. Just want to say, make sure I said that right. Cape Cod Commission has 2010 average volumes, say for a T-ticket highway. They also have their peak summer volumes. The volumes we collected were higher than the 2010 peak period volumes that they expected to have on T-ticket highway. It's not an exact science, because of course, they didn't put a counter out right in front of our site the way we did, but it was just to the, towards, you know, Falmouth Center here, there was a, a station just south down by the, the supermarket. So as I said, we, we moved all the traffic from here. We then took, now there's going to be a vacant parcel in Driftwood Plaza. We use ITE Trip Generation, which is the national standard, and use the retail land use codes to put traffic back into Driftwood Plaza to account for any tenant that goes in there. We use the same land use code for the other parcel of the gas station, which is the unknown tenant at, at this point. So we have all of the existing traffic moved and all of the new expected traffic reassigned and added to the, the traffic volumes that we expect. And of course, putting in a drive-through will increase how, how much business they are doing. They're not doing this just for, for fun. They're looking to get more business, obviously. So the, again, the ITE Trip Generation averages show that there's a 12% increase between fast food uses without a drive-through and fast food uses with a drive-through. So the 85 customers that they had on the weekday AM peak hour, we increased that to 95. And then for the 111 that they had on the Saturday, we increased that to 120 customers. Talking about the cut-through, Steve talked about it quickly. He just wanted to point out the one thing he didn't specifically say. It really helps, the technical term for it is access management. If you have someone in Driftwood Plaza that's coming here, it would be a left out of their site and then a left into the site. So that really, that cuts down two movements that would be conflicting against the, the traffic. It's not as imperative to go from this site to here, because it's two right turns, but it still helps. Anytime you can keep traffic off the main road between two retail plazas like this, it's, it's usually considered a, a good thing. And other than when it's temporarily blocked, I, you know, I definitely told them that. I thought it was a good idea. The drive-through queue lane, if we have studies that show a drive-through that's doing 100 customers, that's just the drive-through, not the Dunkin' Donuts total. So again, we have 120 expected total here. If this driveway was, drive-through was doing 100 customers, we would expect to have a queue length of 15 vehicles. So this queue length is 17 vehicles, so we have, we feel that that's long enough for this site. The other thing, we also, according to industry standards, we increased the volumes from the existing 2011, five years, 2016. There hasn't been much traffic growth recently in the area, but we still apply the growth rate, you know, hoping that the economy turns around and there's more tourists and, and everything else. So basically, the short study was done according to standards, and except with, you know, the specific cases in here where we altered things a bit.
Questions from the board? Yes, Ken?
When you do a traffic study for the counts and the road counters, how, is that the whole time? Are those out there the whole time?
The tube is the automatic traffic recorder. You can feel those when you drive over them. Those are out there to get daily volumes, and we had that out from, from Thursday morning all the way through to Tuesday.
You're saying you had those out there the whole, those weren't out there the whole time in the same spot? Were they in different places?
No, they were, it was, I personally didn't place them, but the volume, the data that we have was collected from a tube that was placed right in between the, the four driveways.
Because I drive that road every day, and I only saw those tubes out there Labor Day period. They weren't out there Sunday, and they weren't out there Saturday.
They should have been out Thursday to Tuesday.
I do not see them.
I wasn't down here during that period, so I certainly can't say.
That's just a question I have, because they were not there on Sunday, and I drove over and they were there Monday.
Right. I can only go by the data that the county company gave to us. It says here, it started recording data at 7:00 AM, which is when they arrive for the turning movement count. The turning movement counts are done by humans, you know, registering when people actually turn and which direction they're coming from. So the sheets that I have here show the data starting at, at 7:00 AM on Thursday, September 1st, yes, September 1st. And then the next, if you look, the next two pages are the speed data. The volume data continues for Friday. Saturday data...
Do we have this?
Basically, the, the Friday daily traffic volume, according to this data, was 23,000. The Saturday traffic data was also 23,000. Sunday was 21,300. And then it got to complete Monday as well, 19,000. And then that's when it, they didn't, they picked them up at some point on Tuesday, but they didn't, you know, send over that data because I wasn't as concerned with the tubes.
We delivered a full copy this, this Saturday. We have three copies to the secretary at the town hall. So you have it.
We didn't get it this evening.
They delivered it on Thursday. I'll review it before I give it to the board. I know we delivered it. We have it and we'll review it.
Sure. We use a very reputable accounting firm. They do, they're not, you know, they don't work for us. I mean, they work for us, but not solely for us. They work for all traffic engineers. They work for municipalities. I had no reason to, to think that the, you know, when I received this, that they weren't out the whole time, but I wasn't personally here that weekend.
Well, that's just a question. This is, is it spotting? And, and, because I did not see them that Sunday.
Right. Now, the tubes, I mean, according to this data that I received, were out between Thursday morning and, and all the way through Monday.
We'll check through the board as we liberate some of the data. Other questions?
These counts gave you more cars than what the county predicted?
These counts gave us, you're right, higher volumes, even though it was technically September, they gave us higher volumes than the summer of 2010.
So if they were going to square around, they would have given you lower volumes.
I don't, yeah. And they wouldn't even have the, the Cape Cod Commission volumes. That's something that, you know, I have. But the county company, they, they don't know what's going on here. They don't, they don't have an agenda that we, they go out, they do the counts, they give me the data, and then we, we analyze it. They really, you know, they don't know. They know it's a Dunkin' Donuts because they were doing a trip gen specifically going into the Dunkin' Donuts, but they don't know it's moving. They don't know any of that.
Jim?
Yeah. Specifically, I'm, I'm very pleased to hear the traffic counts and see the change. In your professional opinion, is this amount of lineup going to be, be able to absorb the, the peak traffic without severely impacting Route 28?
Yes. The traffic, what they got in mention, the traffic operations of these two driveways, the way they exist now, they'll basically just shift over and they'll operate. So if you have trouble getting out of Driftwood Plaza now, you'll have similar delays getting out of this, these two driveways and vice versa. Right now, you can get out of here pretty easily because there's less traffic, so they essentially switch. That is in the traffic study. It's in the table.
Are they flip, you think they're flip-flopping? The load is flip-flopping?
Right. Dunkin' Donuts, they're in the morning peak hour is the main generator. There's 111 on the Saturday morning going into that, into Driftwood, ah, going into the Dunkin' Donuts. In total, going into Driftwood Plaza, we are at one, just about 125, if I did that math correctly. So the majority of the traffic is the Dunkin' Donuts that are in and out of these drive-through, ah, these driveways. So they essentially flip. They don't operate exactly the same, because I move, right now, they're, they basically use these two driveways equally. They're actually, most of the, mostly right turns in here and then right turns out here. I kind of readjusted it again based on the parking location and the fact that people are going to want to get to the drive-through, so they're, you know, they're going to come out. It's still going to be a lot of right turns in here and a right turn out here because of where they're coming out. But I didn't follow exactly the way they're heading into the...
And you have the gas station traffic incorporated in that?
Yes. So everything I moved over was added on top of the gas station traffic. It was added on top of the car wash traffic and the service station traffic, which isn't going to be there anymore, but I didn't take that out. It wasn't worth, you know, having someone go out and specifically say, all right, they only went to the service station. The volumes are, are pretty low in and out of that gas station right now. So to say, you know, there's three, like, there won't be three cars there that are going to the service station now. It's, it wasn't pertinent. So we left it in there. So technically, the volumes we have coming out of these two driveways are slightly higher than what we expect because we didn't take out where we could have.
Other questions? About traffic? I have one. Traffic heading north on T-ticket highway will be allowed to enter both of those curb cuts?
Yes. And we do have, I, I did move some of the Dunkin' Donuts traffic and had them making lefts into both of them. But I have, and I can give you the exact numbers, I have the majority going into that northern driveway, just because they're going to be, the parking is more geared to that side and to get to the, the beginning of the drive-through lane. So...
Right. So what, what would be, in your opinion, the, the detriment to business if you had in only on the north one and out only on the south one?
For the Dunkin' Donuts?
No, for the whole...
Well, right. I was going to say, for the Dunkin' Donuts, one-way circulation, it would have no impact. If you're allowing lefts in and lefts out, there's no impact. The problem is you're creating an onsite circulation issue by restricting those driveways because of the gas station.
I'm concerned about restricting traffic on T-ticket highway twice, in addition to the two entrances into Driftwood Plaza. Now you've got four, four curb cuts there where traffic going north can turn left into those.
Right.
Okay. And, and, and that, and my, my problem is that, my issue is, my question is, you know, how much, how much is that going to slow down the traffic on, on T-ticket highway?
Right. Well, we, I mean, we currently have those four driveways and four places for people to make lefts. And again, it's basically, these two drivers are getting heavily used right now. They're just going to shift to these two. And, and these two driveways right now aren't getting used off that, that often, and they're going to shift this way. So you're not changing so much how many access points there are or how many vehicles are in and out. You're just changing which two are going to be used more often than, than the other two.
Okay. Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I can help follow up on that. That's the, the point we were trying to make, is that we're not changing either the location or the dimensions or the number of access points. What's currently there right now is two access points into the gas station, two access points toward Driftwood Plaza. This part isn't changing anymore. We're not proposing any changes at all. We're just simply moving the Dunkin' Donuts over here. There are no places anywhere on Route 28 that have one-way entrance in or out. Anywhere from Whisthole, all the rest isn't a single place. The only place I know of, now that restricts you which way you can go, is a very poorly designed gas station that's at the end of Sandwich Road and 151. And I would say, most of the people do not follow that, no left turn when you come out there. This currently allows two-way traffic in and out now, and we're not proposing to change that. If, remember, all we're talking about on here is the increase in the traffic, the net increase in what's already there. There's traffic right now for the service station, the car wash, and the gas station. The gas station is a six-day gas station. We're not proposing a six-day gas station. In Brian's report, they talk about the increase, and there's, there's always been the big talk about how much this is going to increase. On page six, I just want to quote you this. You'll see on Table 3 that talks about the net increase. During the peak hours, either on the weekday or on the weekends, there's only a 0.6 or 0.7% increase in the traffic. And as it's quoting Brian's report, it says, "As shown, the proposed redevelopment of the site is expected to increase traffic along T-ticket highway by less than 1% north and south of the site. The off-site traffic volume increases traveling on T-ticket highway expected to be unperceivable." We're talking about a very minimal net increase in traffic from what's already there. He gave you the, the numbers, 12% total through that peak hour. We're talking about very little increase, but it's only the net increase over what's already there. There's already two-way traffic in and out. We're not changing the access points. What we're doing to try to hopefully gain is the access management by opening up between the two pieces of property, because we happen to have the luxury of same property owners over two pieces.
I guess my point is...
Mr. Chairman, just to help things along here. Let us, let us review the traffic study for you. And we've been reviewing it for 30 years. We know all the incentives and the service levels in and out of this cut, the cuts. So let's, let us give you a recommendation before we ask, you know, the consultant, the 20 questions, and I'll have a better recommendation for you. I just didn't have the time to review that report before tonight's meeting.
Okay. All right. My, my final point is that, that the statement was made right up front that without the drive-through, the whole situation was not economically feasible. And so that means to me that if you move the Dunkin' Donuts from Driftwood over 100 feet, that, that there's, that there's a greater increase, anticipated increase in traffic than what you're proposing.
Yes.
That's, 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 that's just the way I'm looking at it right now. Jim, you had a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, you know, having this cut-through between the properties, are you ready to put some kind of easement in perpetuity? I mean, what, you could sell one of the properties, that could go away. Are we going to solve that problem forever?
Yes.
Other questions from the board?
To address your question, we did, I just want to say, we increased the Dunkin' Donuts patronage by 12%, you know, again, so they're not moving over just to move over. So we did assume, you know, an increase in volume.
Okay. Mr. McKenzie, are there other presenters in your team?
No, I, I think unless you had any questions of the franchise holder about the operations or needs, that we don't have any, any other presenters.
Percentage?
Does anyone have any questions of the Dunkin' Donuts franchise holder?
I actually do. It's in percentage and volume, because what do you anticipate in the growth in your business, a percentage in, in growth by doing this? Because we're being told it's economically not feasible without the drive-through, and now we're only hearing a 12% growth. I, I'd like to know what, what you think you could get from a drive-through versus not a drive-through.
Yep. I think that...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. My name is Eric Eskander. I'm the Dunkin', Eric Eskander. I'm the Dunkin' Donuts franchisee.
Go ahead. Your last name, please?
E-S-K-A-N-D-E-R.
Thank you.
Yep. I think the 12% is, is close. You know, it might be slightly more... You know, it might be slightly more, you may be looking at, you know, 15%, but I mean, it's, you know, we generally, we generally make these decisions based on 15% increase.
Okay.
So, I mean, you know, it's relatively no different than what the traffic study is showing.
15%, not a year, but a total, just a...
15% increase in traffic. The volume, I mean, I...
Not a year, not every year, you're just saying when you convert from...
From a drive-through, from a non-drive-through location to a drive-through location. Yeah, that'd be nice. I'll take that side.
Any other questions?
No.
I have one. What does Dunkin' Donuts do? Do they have a plan to increase the speed in which you service a customer? Are there other techniques that, that they employ that do that?
We do, we're always trying to, yeah, on a consistent basis. And as the stores get, you know, remodeled and, and new stores get built like this one will be, hopefully, we're always analyzing the layout and trying to ensure that, you know, it's the most efficient way to do things. And just to that point, I think that, you know, things that came out of the traffic study and, and the different resources that they used to, to determine these numbers, I can tell you just, I can only tell you based from experience, and we're, I'm a multi-unit operator. I have, half of my locations have drive-throughs. I only have one other location that, that queues as many cars as, as we're showing here, and that location does two and a half to three times the volume that I'm predicting to do in this, in this. So, so my, my point is that this, that what we're showing here for, for, you know, to, what we're showing to be able to accommodate for traffic in that drive-through is overkill beyond belief. I mean, if I can fill that drive-through the way that it's showing, I'll be doing a lot better than predicted. And, you know, I own 50 locations, and I think I'm a pretty good judge of, of, you know, what we're going to be doing over there.
The reason I ask that question is because the butters are concerned about the fumes that are being generated by idling cars in the traffic queue. And it's a legitimate concern.
Sure. Typical time for a car to get through, a drive-through is, is under two minutes. Now, that goes from the speaker to the, to the window. You know, again, you know, if, if, if... If this location's, if this location opens up and cars are going out at this point, I, you know, you know, I don't know, we better get Dunkin' Brands in there to figure out how good the site is because it's, it's, you know, it's unheard of.
Okay. Well, I'm not so, I'm just talking about the, the speed with which you service people.
Right, and I, and I...
The length of the queue.
Right. What I was, what I was getting at was, was, you know, typically, or average time is, is around two minutes. Average time for our locations, again, you know, in the, you know, 20-something drive-throughs that I have, is, is under...
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion that we continue to 11:30. There are other people who may want to speak to this article, and there are other people who have business before us tonight. And they've been around here all evening, so I think it would be fair to extend the time again, so I make that motion.
I would second that motion.
Discussion? Go to 11:30? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? abstained? Okay, 11:30 it is. All right. Jim, I mean, Bob?
At peak time, how many, how many cars would be queued up during peak hours?